Good evening. 8/12/2015 Work Session of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tracy Philbeck. I serve as Chairman of the Board, as well as Commissioner for the Dallas Township. I'd like to welcome our viewers and thank Time Warner Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible. I'd like to present to you your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my right.
Good evening.
Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Good evening. Mickey Price, Southland Township.
Good evening. Jason Williams, Gastonia Township.
Good evening. Joe Carpenter, Craters Mountain Township.
Tom Keeger, Gastonia Township.
Thank you, gentlemen. I would like to inform the audience, if you see us up here messing around with iPads and things of that nature, it's some new technology. We're trying to go paperless, which will save a ton of money. So we're trying to get used to that. And in Joe's case, you really can teach an old dog new tricks. Our first item is Proclamations, Commendations, Awards, and Certificates. Commissioner Brown.
Move over your trees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the Honorable Sheriff Alan Kloniger and the Chief. Chief Louis, please step up, please.
The microphone's the center of your spot.
Oh, well.
Look out. I like you, though.
Whereas, it is important for the people of Gaston County and its municipalities to know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of our law enforcement officers and agencies. We applaud the members of these agencies and recognize them for their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property and protecting people against violence and disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas, our nation, more than ever, depends upon local law enforcement as our first line of defense. The men and women of these agencies give of themselves daily in a day-to-day out to preserve our homeland security. And whereas, in 2014, 127 peace officers across the nation, and two from North Carolina alone, were killed in the line of duty. Whereas, the members of law enforcement agencies of Gaston County and municipalities play a vital role in safeguarding these rights and freedoms of our local citizens. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners proclaims May 3 through the 9, 2015, as Law Enforcement Week in Gaston County, and May 7, 2015, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And join law enforcement officers nationwide in honoring their fallen comrades and urge Gaston County citizens commemorate the law enforcement officers, past and present. Be it further resolved that the Gaston -- citizens of Gaston County recognize and appreciate the contributions made by local law enforcement officers in handling the difficult situations and encounters of a daily basis on the job. To be adopted the 26th day of May, 2015. Gentlemen, thank you for what you do, the people you serve. It's sometimes a thankless job, but I tell you this, we could never be more proud of the gentlemen that you represent in all walks of your law enforcement. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Please say something?
Appreciate it. Go ahead, Chief.
Thank you again. Well, I'll just say very quickly, we all know that the microscope, the criticism, the cynicism that's on law enforcement today is very, very much out there, is great. There's a lot of pressure on law enforcement. Some of it deservedly so, some of it not. But the one thing that remains the same, and that's the fact that we take the time every year to honor those fallen men and women who've given their life to serve all of us. And that hasn't changed. And I thank you tonight for recognizing that and honoring them as well. So thank you very much.
Echo and the Chief's sentiments. We appreciate you remembering those officers who have given the ultimate sacrifice. "Great love, have no man then he lay down his life for his friends." That's a mantra that every law enforcement officer in this state is willing to do, for you as the citizens. And they'll willingly do it. All we ask is that you do remember their sacrifice. Do say a little prayer tonight for their families and the ones they've left behind. And remember, we're here to serve you, and that's what we'll continue to do. Thank you very much.
One second, Mr. Chairman. I know that this is about a lot of fallen officers, and you guys represent that in our people, and we're so proud of them. Jim, come here. Come here, Jim. This is one of our officers that was shot at and was hit and made it. And that isn't -- you guys don't get to go home to tell your family members. And I know all you want to do is go home at the end of the day and hug on your kids and your wife and tell them how much you love them. And Jim, but thank you for your service, and every one of you that do that. But I just wanted to have that special recognition for you because of that, and if you want to say something, you're more than welcome as well.
Thank you, Chad. Chad and I go way back, we went to school together, North Gaston High School. Thank you guys as well for honoring us. It's a privilege to work in this county. It's where I was born and raised. Thank you.
Sheriff, before you sit down, would you like to at least have your explorer's post, maybe tell a little about who they are and what they do?
My explorer post, if y'all stand up. In the sheriff's office, like the Gastonia City Police and the county police, the -- each of us have an explorer post. This is through the Boy Scouts of America. These young men and women, and I always get this wrong, from 13 to 18, maybe a little older than that, they come to the sheriff's office once a week or once a month. They meet, they learn about law enforcement, they also learn about giving back to the community. They volunteer within the community at different events. And it teaches them a lot of self-responsibility, and we're very proud of our explorer posts. Sergeant Max Davis is over the post right now. And you'll see him out directing traffic at events, parking cars, Special Olympics. We're always trying to give back to the community, and that's what we like to instill in them, to give back to the community and be a good, solid citizen for our county. So I just want to appreciate Commissioner -- I mean Chairman Philbeck for recognizing them tonight. They've come to observe government and action.
Thank you, Sheriff. Yeah, my nephew's back there, we call him Little Baby David. Want the Justin Bieber haircut? I give him a hard time. Thank you for coming. I hope that you will enjoy it and not find it boring. If you'd have came last week and had a little bit more excitement. Our next item is Commissioner Frayley is not here due to a sickness. Some Commissioner Price will be presenting his resolutions. Commissioner Price.
Thank you. Would Sheriff Sergeant Wanda Hester please join me at the podium? Family, friends, coworkers may also come along. Whereas, Sergeant Wanda Hester retired from the Gaston County Sheriff's Office on December the 1st, 2014, with 28 years of full-time service, and more than 32 years total service as a deputy at the Gaston County Sheriff's Office. And whereas Sergeant Wanda Hester has requested that she be awarded the Service Sidearm and Badge worn during her service with the Gaston County Sheriff's Office pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 20-187.2 and Board Resolution 259 dated October 27, 1983. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Gaston County Board of Commissioners that the badge worn by Sergeant Wanda Hester and her Service Sidearm Glock Model 22 Serial Number SXV785 be declared surplus equipment. The badge worn by Sergeant Wanda Hester be given to her in honor of her service with the Gaston County Sheriff's Office. The Service Sidearm Glock Model 22 Serial Number SXV785 be permanently retired by the Gaston County Sheriff's Office and offered to retired Wanda Hester at the price of $1. Gaston County Sheriff's Office is directed to award Sergeant Wanda Hester with the Service Sidearm and Badge as specified and worn by Sergeant Hester during her service to the Gaston County, in accordance with North Carolina General Statutes and the policy of this board. Be it further resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners expresses sincere gratitude for the dedicated service of Sergeant Wanda Hester, retired, and re wishes her the best in her retirement. This to be adopted the 26th day of May, 2015.
Here's your proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And here's your sidearm.
Thank you.
You may make a speech.
First of all, I'll say that Wanda did a real good job for the people. She was dedicated, still is dedicated. And for many a person that came to the courthouse, she took her job, her last assignment was sergeant within the courts, and you were up here for
Twenty-four years.
Four years. She raised a lot of law enforcement officers, she raised a lot of district attorneys, raised a lot of lawyers. A lot of people depended on Wanda and hated to lose her. But she's enjoying retirement, she has her granddaughter with her, and on behalf of the sheriff's office and all the people, thank you for an excellent job you did.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well, I really didn't know that I was going to speak tonight, so basically just thank you for letting me do my years of service in Gaston County, and I've greatly enjoyed it. And back when I started, there was very few women, so that was a real challenge. And I guess that prepared me for the years to come. But thank you very much.
Would Mr. Luther Hester please join me at the podium? Family, friends, and coworkers.
Hell, buddy.
I noticed nobody moved.
Not one friend.
Whereas Deputy Luther Hester retired from the Gaston County Sheriff's Office on December the 1st, 2014, with over 20 years of service in law enforcement in Gaston County. And whereas Deputy Hester has requested that he be awarded the Service Sidearm and Badge worn during his service with the Gaston County Sheriff's Office pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 20-187.2 and Board Resolution 259 dated October 27, 1983. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Gaston County Board of Commissioners that the badge worn by Deputy Hester and his Service Sidearm Glock Model 22 Serial Number SXV786 be declared surplus equipment. The badge worn by Deputy Hester be given to him in honor of his service with Gaston County Sheriff's Office. The Service Sidearm Glock Model 22 Serial Number SXV786 be permanently retired by the Gaston County Sheriff's Office and offered to retired Deputy Luther Hester at the price of $1. The Gaston County Sheriff's Office is directed to award Deputy Hester with the Service Sidearm and Badge as specified and worn by him during his service as Gaston County, in accordance with North Carolina General Statutes and the policy of this board. Be it further resolved, the Gaston County Board of Commissioners expresses its sincere gratitude for the dedicated service of Deputy Luther Hester, retired, and wishes him the best in his retirement. This to be adopted the 26th day of May, 2015.
Thank you, Sheriff, and thank you for your service.
Can I borrow a dog?
No, I'm good. I appreciate it.
That's good, Mickey. I like that.
I happen to have one.
Again, if y'all can't tell, Luther's married to Wanda now, so they're a pair. But
I lose one boss, get another.
But I have to say this, when I left the Dallas Police Department and came to the county police, one of the first men I met there was Luther Hester. Me and him have been through a lot of things together back then. I had no way of knowing one day I'd be his boss. And he was a great honor to have him work for me. He did a great job for the citizens of this county, always been dedicated, put his life on the line, just like his wife did many, many times, and very proud to have had him, hate to lose him. And but he's enjoying retirement, I think, just a little bit. He was. But when you've policed with someone, as long as I did Luther, and came back to police with him again, there's a bond there that never goes away. And he's a good man, and I appreciate him. Thank you, Luther.
Thank you.
Gonna borrow another dog. I'm not much on speeches, I just want to say I appreciate it. It's been a pleasure, it's been an honor to work for Gaston County, and especially for my friend Alan Kloniger. Thank you.
Our next item is Commissioner Keeger with the resolution to award the Service Sidearm and Badge to retired Police Sergeant Don Michael Mike Robinson. Sergeant Robinson, would you and your crew like to join me? Been a long time, Mike.
It took you 10 years ago.
Folks, this is Sergeant Mike Robinson with the county police, and he too is retiring. And whereas Sergeant Don Michael Robinson is retiring from the Gaston County Police Department as of April 1, after serving 29 years with Gaston County. And whereas Sergeant Don Michael Robinson has requested he be awarded his Service Sidearm Heckler &amp; Koch Model HK45 Serial Number HKU023861 and Badge worn during his service with the Gaston County Police Department pursuant to General Statute 20-187.2 and County Board Resolution Number 259, which dated October 27, 1983. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Gaston County Board of Commissioners that 1, the badge worn by Sergeant Robinson and his Service Sidearm Heckler &amp; Koch Model HK-45 Serial Number HKU023861 be declared surplus equipment. 2, the badge worn by Sergeant Robinson be given to him as a remembrance of his service with the county police department. 3, the Service Sidearm be permanently retired by the Gaston County Police Department and offered to Sergeant Robinson at the purchase price of $250. I just wanted to see if he's paying attention for the minutes $1. The Chief of the Gaston County Police Department is directed to award Sergeant Robinson with the Service Sidearm and Badge as specified and worn by him during his service to Gaston County, in accordance with North Carolina General Statutes and the policy of this board. Be it further resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners wish to express their sincere gratitude for the dedicated service of Sergeant Don Michael Robinson, retired, and wish him the best in his retirement. And we will adopt that later this month at our voting meeting. Congratulations, Mike.
Thanks, Sheriff.
This is yours, I'm going to ask your chief to present that to you, and then say a word, and then hear what you have to say.
Retired Sergeant Robinson. On behalf of the men and women of the Gaston County Police Department, I'm proud to present you with your sidearm for the dedication you've provided to our department and the citizens of Gaston County. Congratulations.
Thanks, Sheriff. Appreciate it. I just want to thank the Chairman Philbeck and the rest of the board for recognizing us, and it's been a pleasure to serve. I've enjoyed my 30 years.
Our next resolution is a resolution recognizing and honoring those who gave all during their military service to the United States of America, and to express their gratitude to the fallen members of our armed services. If there's anyone in the audience who is actively serving or has served our country, if you would please stand at this time, we would like to recognize you. Thank you.
I was one of those Gap kids that come along right after the, well, the Korean War was -- not World War II, but Korean War was winding down, and I missed that action. I was requested to go in, but anybody called me. So I commend you guys that did, and ladies that did, serve this country. The last Monday of May of each year, we have a Memorial Day, and it's to honor and recognize those who have served in our military and served this country. And we have a resolution here that I'd like to read. Whereas Memorial Day was first observed as Declaration Day on May 30, 1868, as an occasion for many Americans to decorate the graves of fallen Civil War soldiers. And whereas, after World War I, this day was expanded to include fallen members of all the nation's wars, and after World War II, this day officially became known as Memorial Day. In 1971, Congress established Memorial Day as a federal holiday to be observed on the last Monday of May in each year. And whereas, we recognize the sacrifices and contributions of men and women of our armed forces have made upholding the principles of democracy and freedom. We extend gratitude to the families of our service members and recognize their sacrifices and unwavering devotion. Without their effort, our men and women could not have completed their mission successfully -- excuse me, without our support. And whereas, this Memorial Day, we express our deepest appreciation to men and women who have laid down their lives in service to our nation, and we mourn with the families and friends of those lost. It is our duty to preserve the legacy of those brave Americans who died defending our great country and our unadable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas, during the time of reflection, we honor and commend those from Gaston County who have contributed to this great country. Our county has a long and dedicated history of military service, and our citizens have made significant contribution locally and worldwide. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners salutes our service members for their outstanding devotion to duty, honor, and country, and recognize this Memorial Day, Monday, May 25, 2015, as a day of honor -- to honor and remember our fallen heroes. The Commission further encourages the citizens of Gaston County to unite in prayer and reflection for the many sacrifices and accomplishments of the fallen soldiers, their family, and our veterans. To be adopted the 26th day of May, 2015. And I will add that I would encourage you to come to the memorial service, I guess it's going to be at Memorial Park again this year, but it'll be announced. So come on out and show your honor for all of these great men and women who have preserved the freedom that we are allowed to live in today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Next up is Commissioner Price with a retirement commendation for Ms. Benny J. BJ Hart, and a proclamation for foster care awareness. Commissioner Price.
Thank you. Would Ms. Benny J. Hart please join me at the podium?
Pretty good, old timer. Pretty good.
We read it or wait until later?
I would wait until later.
Okay. Would Ms. Sarah Norris join me at the podium, and any members of DHHS?
Can I cover?
Yeah.
You'll do.
Whereas, there are approximately 10,000 children and youth in North Carolina foster care system, 270 in Gaston County, who depend on foster parents, family members, volunteers, mentors, policymakers, child welfare professionals, and other members of the community to help them find permanent homes and connections. And whereas, child welfare professionals work to achieve permanency for children through reunification with birth parents, kinship care, or placement in a permanent home through adoption or legal guardianship. And whereas, outcomes for youth who exist foster care without permanency are improved with their transition into adulthood includes a relationship or lifelong connection with a caring adult. And whereas, communities play an important role in supporting all children and youth, especially those in foster care, by becoming a foster parent, respite provider, engaging in volunteer work, or mentoring children who need an adult role model. Individuals and family can make a lasting impact in a child's life. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners proclaims the month of May, 2015, as Foster Care Awareness Month, and extend its grateful appreciation to all foster parents to all foster parents, family members, volunteers, mentors, and child welfare professionals in Gaston County. Further, the Board commends this observance to its citizens as an opportunity for communities, businesses, faith-based organizations, and families to participate in efforts to serve foster children throughout the year. This to be adopted the 26th day of May, 2015.
Mr. Dobbins?
Mr. Dobbins is Director of DHHS. There's one on the inside. Thank you. I look if we may have a podium, please?
Thanks. On behalf of an incredible agency and an appreciation for a community that truly understands our most valuable resource as our children, I'm honored to be here to accept the proclamation. I will say this, while I am not worthy of being a foster parent, I don't have the tools that it need, that you need to be that incredible citizen. I will say this, we have a community that is very giving, very caring, but a community that needs even more support. Our agency is obviously dedicated to serving our most valuable resource, our children. But I will say this, in the absence of local resources, we're strained on a daily basis to reach out to others. If you want to make a difference, the best way you can do that is to make a difference in the life of a child. And if anyone is interested in becoming a foster family or serving a foster care need, we would love for you to reach out to us and let us help you become that. So thank you on behalf of the agency. Thank you on behalf of the workers that do this every single day tirelessly, selfishly. Thank you to our community partners who help us in ways that you cannot imagine. And thank you to the Commission for supporting our efforts in providing homes and care for these children who need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbins.
Next item is certificates of appreciation. It is a great pleasure for the Gaston County Commissioners to honor citizens who have unselfishly given of their time, talent, skills, and energies in service as an appointee to one of our boards or commissions. This type of service is the foundation for citizen involvement in our county government and is helping shape the future of our community. We greatly acknowledge the work of the following individuals and certificates of appreciation have been forwarded to them. Ms. Amy Sipford and Alan Foreman with the Family Advisory Board, Bill Farley with Partners' Behavioral Health Management, Doug Lee with the Personnel Advisory Board, Bill Fawley with the Planning Board, Gary Johnson with the Sarah Local Planning Committee, and Michelle Bowen for Travel and Tourism Advisory Board. Our next item is citizen recognition. Did I?
Right there before Ms. (inaudible).
You want to pronounce that last name?
No.
Could you say that last name again?
(inaudible).
Thank you for your time.[814.57][814.57](Laughter). Our next item is citizen recognition. A portion of the Board's agenda set aside for the purpose of allowing citizens an opportunity to offer their comments and suggestions. The comment period is not intended to require the Commission and/or the staff to answer any prompt to questions or provide a response. Questions requiring a response shall be answered as soon as possible through the county manager's office. Comments will be limited to five minutes. As I call your name, please step to the podium, state your name and address. The first citizen signed up to speak is Shay Adams. And if I did not pronounce that right, please correct me. I did? Okay, good. That's a cool spelling. Okay.
Thank you. I too have this fancy pad, so work with me as well, okay? Good evening, Commissioners. I bring you greetings from the west side of Gastonia, the home of Hunter Hus Huskies. I am Shay Adams, a proud graduate of Hunter Hus, but even more prouder of a future graduate of Hunter Hus, class of 2017. I, as we just celebrated Mother's Day, I wanted to remind you one of the most important parts of being a mother. That is to keep our children safe. With that being said, I wanted to bring up the concerns of the parents and some of the student athletes at Hunter Hus. I have respectively sat on several committees and boards at Hunter Hus and have learned of some of the needs that, of the student athletes that aren't being met. In March, I decided to develop a small group of parents that shared some of the same concerns as I did for the safety of our athletes. We all agreed to draw up a petition that you may have seen on change.org. In this petition, we are requesting funds in order to renovate the tennis courts, the track field, and the practice football field to provide a safer environment for the students. In this petition, it details some of the following safety hazards. The tennis courts, they have cracks with grass growing through them and we all know that can make a very difficult match and we don't want our kids to get hurt. Track, it has cracks that has grown through it as well, grass has grown through there. In fact, at Hunter Hus, we have not been able to host a track meet in over a decade, yet we still have kids that are doing exceptionally well in track and field. The football practice field has often been littered upon with hazardous materials. On April 17, 2015, at approximately 8:00 PM, I posted this petition on change.org and the responses were overwhelming. Within 24 hours, we had 900 signatures. Friends, family, members of the community, as well as new and old Huskies were compelled to sign the petition. The news spread so fast that by April 23, 2015, the Gaston Gazette featured this story on their front page. That's less than a week, you all. Okay. I would like to share just a few of the comments that were left on the page on change.org. Teresa Wilson of Gastonia, North Carolina. This is where I graduated and I agree that students deserve to practice and play sports in a safe environment. I remember how proud I was at Hunter Hus High School when I attended and I'm sure the current students want to feel the same way. Let's get the athletic facilities up to par and keep that Husky pride going. Wanda Ashley Willis, she's of Hawkinsville, Georgia. I am an alumnus of Hunter Hus and we desire our school to be well-maintained and safe for those who attend events at our campus. Jessie Mitchell of Wilmington, North Carolina. My mother and I both graduated from Hus. A lot of great memories. And then I want to read about Randy Moni of Dallas, North Carolina. I'm a land surveyor that has the pleasure of surveying every high school in Gaston County. I even surveyed, well, he listed where all he surveyed, but that's not important, we're not going to call out any schools right now. Each one of those high schools have been, were in 10 times better shape than Hunter Hus, yet they didn't receive any renovation. When I surveyed Hunter Hus, I couldn't believe the shape the school was in and over half of the restrooms at the time were out of order. And I'm going to fast forward on it because I see the light has come on on me. There have been bigger problems, it's bigger problems than just the tennis courts and the track and field, but we would just like our concerns heard. Thank you.
Ms. Adams, could you please state your address for the record?
I'm sorry?
Oh, you're fine.
801 Freedom Road, Gastonia, North Carolina, 28052.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Michael Meeks. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Michael Meeks, 1000 Newcastle Road, Gastonia, North Carolina, 28052. I'm also here about concerns of Hunter Hus High School. I'm a graduate of '87. As we all know, Hunter Hus is one of the oldest schools, is the oldest school in Gaston County and the sports facilities are way overdue for being upgraded. Sports played to me are vital in a kid's life. It teaches them self-discipline, respect, how to work well with others, things that are important in their lives. I've been coaching AAU basketball for over 13 years now. Some kids keep their grades up only so that they can play sports in school. I also now have a son that's in college. He's there with an academic and athletic scholarship. Being a single parent, that's a big burden off of me and I just think the kids need the same opportunities that the other schools are getting. As far as being able to practice, being safe, and just having the facilities they need to grow and experience the things they could. A lot of events that we have to do at other schools that we can't host, that's money we put into other communities that we need the chance to also put that back into our school systems and keep it on our side of town as well. And we can't do that without help, you know, financially. And this is something that's been bought up, you know, several times before and talked about but kicked around, but nobody's come up with a solution at this time. And we're just asking for it to be looked at and considered and we're asking for some help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. I will give you some feedback. The Gaston County School Board is elected school board that actually handles these issues. We do the funding. This request would actually need to come through the school board to us.
And we also have a meeting with them later in the week.
Got you. Okay. And I've actually been out to the facility, I think Jamar's the football coach.
Yes, sir.
Friend of mine, I've been out there. I do definitely see a lot of the need, just want to let you know the proper channel to go through.
Well, we trying all the channels and just getting it out there. Like you said, you've seen some of the needs that need to be addressed, so maybe you could help us lay that to them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Next up is Ms. Dorsey Patrick. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dorsey Patrick. I'm with Jessie's Place Rescue, 66 Timber Ridge Drive, Lake Wiley, South Carolina, 29710. I'm here to talk about Gaston County Animal Control. We were very excited when Dr. Blankenship first took over. She was with the Vet Tech Program. I spoke with her at length. When she first came on, she agreed to do heartworm tests if I provided her with a box of them for any dogs that I requested. Things looked very positive. We were all very excited. Things seemed to shortly go downhill. She restricted the hours that we were able to pull. If you're open till 5, I believe we had until 4 o'clock to pull. Open till 6, we were able to pull until 4:30. No exceptions. What was of particular concern was on April 8, two dogs were put on a do not youth, that is, do not euthanize. Rescues normally have 24 hours to pick them up on the next business day. There were DNEs, do not use, put on two dogs. The next morning, they were dead. We asked her why this happened, we got no response. This was all kind of brushed under the table except April 24, I personally put a do not youth on a dog about 3 o'clock, this was a Friday afternoon. A volunteer that's been working with a Gaston shelter for six years, she's the top volunteer for the Animal League of Gaston County. She was at the shelter at 10 till 4 to pick up the dog. The dog was very timid. She didn't want them to use a catch paw on the dog. She worked with the dog for a half an hour. The dog was just about to come take a treat from her hands when she was told, "Time is up." That was 4:20. The shelter closes at 5. She went into the office, spoke with Annie Thomas, the rescue coordinator, and she was told repeatedly the dog would be safe until Monday, she could come back Monday and come back and work a little bit more of the dog to get the dog calmly into her, into, you know, for her to load the dog up. There were four other dogs that had a do not youth on them by another rescue with Operation Dog Tag. Monday morning, and we actually found out Friday night, when the dogs come off the website, they are either out of the building or killed. The dog came off the website, the dog that my friend had, my volunteer had been there to try to take. The other four dogs with do not youth on them came off the website. We didn't get confirmation until Monday morning that the dogs were all killed. The lady with Operation Dog Tag was on the phone with Dr. Blankenship for 37 minutes after closing. Somehow she got through to her, I don't know if Dr. Blankenship called her, she called, whatever, and she begged her to, she had a volunteer standing outside of the shelter ready to load the four dogs up. Again, they were closed at 5, this all took place after 5, but she begged her to hold those dogs until Monday morning and Dr. Blankenship said, "No, it's not, you know, it's not our policy." During the discussion, Dr. Blankenship mentioned to her something about, "Do you want to discuss your email to the county commissioners?" Which indicates to the lady with Operation Dog Tag that there might have been a vendetta there. At any rate, she killed all the dogs. She killed my dog that the volunteer was there to pick up Friday afternoon and was guaranteed would be safe until Monday and she killed the other four. I'm sorry, but this is not acceptable. This is not the way we've worked with Gaston for years. Gaston has been exceptionally rescue-friendly in many cases. I see it's coming to an end. Shortly after that, I got an email from Dr. Blankenship that said, "I'm not doing any more heartworm tests for you and the heartworm tests will return to me." She has turned the Gaston Shelter into a very unrescue-friendly shelter. Things are going backwards, not forwards. We're totally disappointed. We thought she was going to be a great asset to everybody. We don't know what's happened. I don't know what to ask for, but she can't keep on killing dogs with rescues and we work 24/7 to save these dogs. We're trying to help you get your youth rates down and she's fighting us. She's driving longtime volunteers right out the door and the rescues out the door. A lot of the Gaston volunteers are scared to speak up because they're afraid they'll be banned from pulling from the shelter, as I may be, because shelters that are unfriendly are notorious for banning rescues that speak out against them. They ban them. They try to make them go away. I'm sorry, I had to speak up. We've got a real problem here.
Could I?
Thank you for hearing me.
You may have said it, I may have missed it. What is your address?
I said it. 66 Timber Ridge Drive, Lake Wiley, South Carolina, 29710. I probably said it too fast.
Next up is Ms. Karen Boylan. Did I say that correctly?
Close enough.
Close enough.
Good evening. My name is Karen Boylan. My address is 4912 La Barron Street, Charlotte, North Carolina, 28270. I am both an advocate for the Animals of Gaston County Animal Control and a placement partner. I have fostered many Gaston animals, a few of which have become family members. As a result of my working to more effectively market the animals with enhanced pictures, I came to realize how much I wanted to help. The animals, the staff, the shelter, the community. My creating a 501(c)(3) is a direct result of that passionate, passion to partner with Gaston. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the animals this evening. The word partner and partnership means ally, associate, collaborator, cooperation, alliance, union, relationship, shared risk and shared reward. The opposite of partner, partnership is enemy and foe. The organizations that save animals from animal control are referred to as placement partners by the county. That would imply by the title that rescue groups are considered to be allies, associates, and collaborators. Unfortunately for the Animals of Gaston County, we feel as though we are enemy and foe. These points highlight how we are not being treated as partners. Recently, there was a change in the hours that placement partners are allowed to pull animals from the shelter. This occurred with no prior warning or knowledge and no collaboration with the groups that it would affect. When I sent an email asking if there could be some way that we could work together to come up with a solution, no response was received. Given that the majority of animals saved are as a result of rescue, why impact the hours and limit the hours negatively to impede rescues' progress? This does not define partner. There's been a disregard for do not euthanize emails since the beginning of the year. They have been the standard for years in order to hold an animal. Even with the policy changes, it was stated that a rescue arrived late, if a rescue arrives late, to pick up an animal and there was a DNE placed, it would be held to the next day. This has not happened in healthy animals that were going to be picked up or euthanized. There's been no substantial reason offered for this. This does not define rescue, this does not define partnership, excuse me. The program-- The program, Another Leash on Life, has been serving the greater good for this community for some time now, and recently, with no apparent reason, it has been discontinued. What a great opportunity to serve the community and also save dogs now gone. This does not define partner. Rescues are the first to be called on to save animals when the shelter is full, when animals are sick and given four hours to, to leave, when someone surrenders 16 cats. It is apparent from the hard numbers that the rescue community responds and saves. It is interesting that the adopt reclaim percentage, however, has not moved much over the course of years. When is the last time an off-site adoption event was held? Not for some time. This feels like a one-sided relationship, and it does not define partner. These points are not because of any one person. It's taken years to breed this environment. There's a lack of regard and respect for the rescue community as a whole, and neither side, so to say, wins as a result of non-cooperation. It is the animals that lose and the community that suffers. One cannot dispute the numbers. Rescue organizations help the live release rate more than public adoptions. To illustrate this, April numbers have just been posted. Intake of animals was 425. Those euthanized, 75. Adopted by public adoptions and reclaimed, 43. Rescue saves, 229. Don't be fooled, the youth rate is down because intake is down and rescue is up. It is apparent by the strong trend in rescue saves up to now that this is despite the limitations set. If relations do not improve, this trend will review, verse as rescues leave. What will it take to come together, to have a collaborative session, a productive session, to disagree on some things and agree to disagree, but also to move forward on others? Time and again, change is promised. Time and again, those commitments fall by the wayside. What will it take? Thank you.
Ms. Deborah Weaver.
My name is Deborah Weaver. I am a Gaston County resident. I live at 3009 Alton Drive in Gastonia, North Carolina, 28054. I'm here as a Gastonia resident and on behalf of Very Friends Rescue Center, whom I volunteer for and have pulled many times for. We have pulled hundreds of animals from the Gaston Shelter over the past four years. I believe that more effort should be made to work with the rescue groups. More than 50% of the animals that get out of Gaston Animal Control do so because rescues pull them. Having a rescue coordinator at animal control has been helpful. It is nice to have someone there that you can work with, that you can talk to, that will return your phone calls. But there are too many restrictions placed on the rescue groups, such as the shorter hours that have been mentioned, and we are no longer allowed to pull on Saturdays. At least one doll, one day a week should have later hours, not only for the rescue, but for the community at large. They need to be open another Saturday a month, and rescue groups need to be allowed back on Saturdays to come pick up animals. There are also many TNR programs in other shelters, and I believe our director should make the effort to have one implemented at Gaston County. Gaston County Animal Control could work hand in hand with the Gaston Spay Neuter to allow TNR. They would alter and release the cats deemed feral back to their original locations. County residents could be educated about TNR and its benefits, as TNR is the only real effective solution for these cats. Lastly, it is time for Gaston County to build a new, up-to-date shelter. It is time to move forward and have a facility that can accommodate the number of animals that afford, unfortunately, find their way into our shelter's care. It is time for Gaston Animal Control to become a shelter for the animals, not just animal control. It's time to get rid of the stigma that has been associated with Gaston Animal Control for too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. You'll have to pronounce it when you get up here.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Nagito. My address is 2543 Beacon Forest Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina. And I am here this evening because I feel that I am a rescue partner with some of these folks that have already spoken. I work a full-time job, and I have a lot of rescues of my own. And I feel that, you know, I have done so much work in trying to rescue dogs at the Gaston County Shelter, as I do with many rural shelters throughout the Carolinas. I feel with all the partnership of our rescue groups, we have made a big difference in Gaston County, and there are a lot of people that feel the same way, but are afraid to speak up because we, as we said before, we feel that if we do speak up, that we will be ousted and no longer, you know, be able to go to Gaston to pull. And that will not harm us, but it will harm the dogs there, and that won't get out and be alive. I just want to say that I would like to know if something will change. I feel that with the new partnership there, that it's really not a partnership. Because I work full-time trying to get there at four o'clock, if we get there at 4:05, they will put the dog down. And that has happened several times. So we just want to make sure that everyone understands what's really going on, and that we want some help just to make it a better place to work with, and that we can make sure that a lot of, lot more dogs do get out and are safe and alive. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is Gaston County Family Advisory Board 2015 Family Advocate Awards. Commissioner Chad Brown.
My name is Linda McConnell, and I am here representing the Gaston County Family Advisory Board, which is an outgrowth of the Quality of Family Task Force. For many years, beginning in 1992, this board has developed a family recognition event to honor individuals and agencies in our county who have made contributions that we consider above and beyond the call of duty. Tonight, this occasion honors two citizens who have made a special individual or community effort to enhance the quality of life for the Gaston County families. We ask that the honorees come forward to receive their medals as their names are read. The 2015 honorees are as follows. Nelia is a true advocate for children and families in Gaston County. How she is able to find time for her own family is truly amazing. Nelia is making a difference in Gaston County in many, many ways. She retired a few years ago from the Gaston County Health Department, but apparently has found that living the life of leisure is not for her. Nelia works tirelessly with least of these Gaston, making bags of hope for the 300 children in foster care in Gaston County. Her special touch and personal note in each bag declares to these children that they do matter and that they are loved. Nelia enhances the lives of the children in foster care and their families by going the extra mile. She gives children that have lost everything a little something to call their very own. Nelia is married to David and mom to Robert and Ashley. Two of her most precious prides and joys are her grandson Jonathan and granddaughter Callie. She is a devoted grandmother, and they are the highlight of her life. She enjoys baking and shopping and serving others. She volunteers with her church and has led several mission teams. She is caregiver for her husband, her mother and father, and her husband's adopted brother with special needs. She is so very loving, caring, and compassionate. Not sure where she gets her strength and energy to care for everyone around her, she has a true servant's heart. She is always on the go, but manages to still find time to help out in her community. We honor and thank Nelia Brunson. Sharon Thunderburg.
Our second honoree is a truly dedicated and unique individual. Sharon is CEO and founder of the Off the Streets Program, and brings a special combination of compassion, knowledge, and experience to those persons that she touches each day. Off the Streets is a program designed to assist women get off the streets and become free from the street life. This program helps provide a safe haven plus the necessities of life, including material, emotional, and spiritual, as these women put their lives back together. Sharon provides tough love and strong leadership, resulting in rehabilitation as these women re-enter the workforce and life as capable, responsible, and contributing members of society. Sharon has lived the same life and struggles as many of the women, and this experience is invaluable in understanding the difficulties they face. She is tireless in her efforts to help improve the quality of life for these women of Gaston County. Her constant dedication and tireless devotion to them is a real benefit to our community. A quick look at the numbers, over the past 11 years, more than 750 women have benefited from the Off the Streets Program and Sharon's support. Sharon is married to Derek Thunderburg, and Parisha Barnes calls her mom. The family dog Diesel and three cats also keep Sharon busy. We have a medal for Sharon tonight, but it sounds like a Superwoman cake might be the more appropriate. Congratulations, Sharon.
Thank you, Nelia and Sharon. You make us all proud and remind us of the many good and giving citizens that we have in Gaston County. Take care of yourselves, get, eat healthy, get plenty of sleep and rest. We're going to need you in good shape for a long time. And as I conclude, I would like to thank the Gaston County Board of Commissioners for their support of the Family Advisory Board. We are proud and honored to serve and consider ourselves most fortunate to represent Gaston County. Thank you.
I would like to say a few words about Nelia. I served as chairman of least of these, and it has been an honor to watch her serve others in our community. When a child comes into DSS custody, least of these provides a bag of hope. A lot of times, they don't have clothes, they don't have shampoo, they don't have a lot of basic necessities. In every bag, Nelia prays over every single bag, writes a special note in every single bag, and provides a Bible, not at taxpayer expense, but through the nonprofit, for every single child, every single day. And it's really touched a lot of people, and I just want to thank you publicly for that. We couldn't pay you enough for the heart and the passion that you have to, what I believe is doing God's work. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Let me thank Sharon because I have seen her at work firsthand. In our Rotary Club, I believe, helped with her facility down there, but she has helped women get off the street in a life that was, had no future to a life that has future. And you can't believe the difference she's making in our community, and thank you, Sharon.
Our next item is Gaston County Parks and Recreation Department, Ms. Kathy Hart with GoApe Adventure Course at Poston Park.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us come before you tonight. We're really excited to present this opportunity to you. I'm just going to give you a brief background, and then I'll let Mr. Tresky speak. Parks and Recreation and the Advisory Board has been looking at this project since last August. We were contacted the county, I think GoApe just did some random contacts of counties and cities, and we got a letter from them, and the Parks Board was really intrigued about what this could be. So they asked me to get more information, which I did, brought that information back to them, and then actually scheduled a visit with GoApe when they were here in October for a conference in Charlotte. GoApe came out, they toured the park, Poston Park. They were as impressed as we are with the park and the potential there, and worked on a proposal for us, which the Parks Board reviewed at their March 16th meeting. And you have a copy of that proposal in your packet there. So tonight, we just ask you to, to listen to Charles, and he can give you more about it, what GoApe does, and hopefully, this will be something that you'll be excited about, too. Charles.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening for the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. Like Kathy said, my name is Charles Tresky. I'm the partnership manager for GoApe. GoApe is an outdoor adventure company. What we do is we build zip lines and ropes courses, and we specialize in building these courses within state, county, city, park systems. So we're one of the exclusive providers for a public-private partnership. With that being said, like Kathy mentioned, you know, we contacted her in August of last year. We felt that this area would be great because it would be able to serve the Charlotte metropolitan area, but also pull from the Greenville and Spartanburg area as well for participants to the county. At this point, I think one of the best things, I would be able to just show a brief video for what we would like to offer. It's about five or six minutes long, and I think it would answer a lot of the questions that you all might have. And then after that, I'll be more than happy to talk a little more about the partnership, and then also be available for some questions as well. So if we can go ahead and show the video, that'd be great.
Since 2002, millions of visitors worldwide have taken part in a GoApe Tree Top Adventure During this time, GoApe's operations and safety practices have led the industry and helped to define its standards. The GoApe Tree Top Adventure Course is an environmentally sensitive and physically rewarding activity. The course enables visitors to navigate the forest canopy via zip lines, swings, ladders, and other obstacles. After the two to three hours it takes to complete the course, participants leave with an overwhelming sense of achievement and satisfaction.
Totally scared of heights, but doing GoApe.
The course is popular with school groups, youth programs, corporate groups, friends, Customers are fitted with harnesses and receive a comprehensive safety briefing by our trained Participants are not allowed to proceed through the course until they have demonstrated that they can do so safely.
I thought the instructors did a very clear and thorough job explaining the course.
We had a great time. The instructors were a lot of fun and safe. They went through everything. I felt very confident getting on the course, like we weren't having any problems. It was a good time.
Can't wait to come back again.
At GoApe, we take our environmental responsibility seriously, as GoApe is dependent on the beauty and long-term health of the trees. Independent arborists inspect all the trees annually to ensure that they continue to thrive. The cables and platforms are kept off the trees by wooden staves, which allow the trees to grow. The material used on the course and cabin is from sustainable sources. GoApe works with the landowner to create an environmental management plan to increase biodiversity and achieve other environmental goals. GoApe takes great care to blend the course into the natural setting and to reduce any environmental impact. All GoApe courses are semi-permanent and can be removed from the trees without leaving a footprint. There is no music or heavy machinery used in the build or operation of the course. The only sound that filters through the trees is the laughter of families and friends enjoying this unique, natural experience.
I'm probably the closest neighbor to GoApe, and my house is only about 100 yards from the course, and there's a lot of, you know, discussion when they were coming in here about what it would mean for our neighborhood, but it's really been great. If you didn't know the course was there and you were taking a walk through the park, you wouldn't even really see it.
GoApe chooses to accommodate a maximum of 14 customers every 30 minutes, with the majority of customers booking in advance, either online or through a call center. This self-imposed constraint reduces lines and provides for a better customer experience. Our course management also limits car flow to approximately four or five. Our course management also limits car flow to approximately four or five car arrivals every 30 minutes, and therefore does not create traffic issues, even at peak times. Dog walkers and other park visitors not taking part in the GoApe course are still free to walk the trails below. Bouncing is only used to protect the course access points from improper use and to protect members of the public from wandering into zip line landing areas. Our staff inspects the course daily, and ladders are taken up at night, so no one can access the course after hours. GoApe is proud of the significant benefits it provides to the community and our partners. By encouraging young people away from their TVs and PlayStations, they gain a greater appreciation for nature while building self-confidence. Special needs participants also enjoy the GoApe experience, allowing them to partake in an activity that provides a great sense of personal achievement. GoApe works with our partners and friends of groups to create interpretive signage and environmental programming to educate visitors on the local ecology and history. Landowners receive a revenue share from GoApe in return for the use of the forest canopy. Local and state tax revenue is also generated. Moreover, the landowners and local community also benefit from the improvement of park facilities and a secondary spend made at local businesses. GoApe also provides 12 new worthwhile and well-rewarded jobs.
GoApe was totally awesome. You got to jump off of these big, giant 45-foot platforms and zip line down through the tree.
GoApe was an amazing experience. They taught us all the safety procedures they need to, in order to make sure it was this fun, safe adventure. It was exhilarating, and I really enjoyed it.
I would do it again any minute.
Me, too. Yeah, definitely.
The GoApe course is an inclusive and adventurous ecoeducational activity with the primary goals of enhancing the community and encouraging everyone to live life adventurously.
Great. So thank you for allowing the video to be shown. I would like to point out a couple of the highlights of the video and also the proposal that we submitted. One of those being the financial benefit here for the county. We project that there'll be a revenue, a direct revenue stream of about $40,000 a year, coming from the participants of the course and the revenue share back to Gaston County. Additionally, the video said it was about 12 jobs. It's actually closer to 15 to 17 jobs that are created. So with that being said, you can expect between $200,000 and $350,000 in annual compensation for those jobs. Additionally, in addition to the jobs that are created, we also become partners with the county. We partner with local organizations that serve underserved individuals. We want them to be able to come out and then serve the course and experience the course, also school groups, county day groups, whatever it might be. So we work with the county to specify which groups would like to receive the free tickets. Just to give an example, last year, among our seven courses that we had last year, we donated over $650,000 worth of tickets back into the community. Going into this year, we have 12 courses. We're building our 12th, as we speak, in Louisville, Kentucky. So I project that number to be well over $1 million worth of tickets that were donated back into the community. One of the focuses of GoApe is allowing everybody to experience the course, so that's why we work closely with the local county to do that. Additionally, as the video had said, and as I was walking in the park this morning, it's an active park for hikers and mountain bikers and things like that. We work really well with those groups, because we aid in the park cleanup and also the trail maintenance, so we will assist those groups as well. And one of the most important things about GoApe is all of this is coming to Gaston County at no capital expense for the county. This is, GoApe funds the project, we build the cabin that goes along with the project, and then finally, we completely indemnify the county of any liability. So basically, what we're here to ask for is support of the project, and then additionally, becoming a partner of GoApe to make, or to allow new visitors to come out to George Poston Park. Here in North Carolina, we did just establish a partnership with Wake County, so Raleigh, North Carolina, has a GoApe course that was opened here just a few months ago. So those are kind of the highlights of the proposal, but at this point, I'd really like to be available to answer questions from the commission, and anybody else that might ask questions.
Commissioner Keighley had a question.
I'm assuming you've done a number of these presentations. What's the first question that comes up usually?
Usually, the first question is somewhere surrounded either around insurance liability or cost for the participant, or cost for the county.
My first question is that the video showed the young lady pulling the ladder up about 30, 40 feet in the air. How did she get down?
She ziplines down at the end of the course. So Laura is one of our instructors and now a member of our operations team. So it's one of the safety aspects that we build into the course, and that's a great question. Thank you.
Seriously, the legal issue, whether we invest financially or not, it's county property, and I'm assuming people sign releases.
Absolutely.
But what happens if, you know, there's a malfunction with either the equipment or a tree that's been hit by lightning previously that we didn't know collapses and somebody's killed or maimed? How do you get away from worrying about that constantly?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, for one, we don't operate in lightning, and we inspect the course each morning.
I didn't mean operate in lightning. A tree that maybe had been hit years prior that had a defect.
Sure, I understand. Actually, what we do is, on an annual basis, we have independent arborists come out and inspect the course. So he is reviewing the trees for their health. If at any point during construction, we notice that there's an issue with a tree, we'll redesign the course to accommodate that. But that is how we are able to avoid that. We actually inspect the trees on an annual basis, and the course is inspected on a daily basis for, you know, for safety issues. Something happens overnight, there's a large limb hanging down, we'll close that site for the day, or as long as it takes us to fix the situation.
Then, of course, the follow-up was the legal, the insurance liability that would eventually, if something happened, fall back to us some way, shape, or form. You can sue for anything.
Absolutely. And we understand that. We, GoApe, has a $10 million liability policy on all of our courses, and we completely indemnify the park of any liability. We also understand how litigious society can be. So we recommend that you guys have an additional umbrella policy, which I'm sure you already have in place, to cover anything of those nature. But through our contract, we will completely indemnify the park of any liability.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming out. Great presentation. Anyone would tell you I'm a parks enthusiast. My question that I have, is this a fixed-site building that you would be putting on? If you decide that it's not a go here, you don't get the attraction that you want, and you're not making whatever it is you want, you pick up and you leave. Building stay as far as fixed site or anything in that part? And follow up with that age limit?
Sure. The building can become property of the county. Let's say after our 10-year lease, everybody's gone GoApe in the Charlotte, Spartanburg, Greenville area, and the contract is over. The cabin that we build could become part of the county, if you'd like, or if not, we would pay to have that removed if that would better suit your needs. So that's completely up to you. As far as age limit goes, our ages are 10 and up for our adult course. So between ages 10 to 15, you need to have parental supervision. Ages 16 and 17, you can be on the course with a parental waiver. And then ages 18 and up, you're able to sign the waiver yourself.
My last question, I guess I would ask, if this were to come to fruition at some point, I would like for your group to hold a day to where you educate the public about what it is that's going on out there, not necessarily just because... I think the more people are aware of how they can get there, other than just paying their money to get that, I think that would be a great foothold you could have. And also, Mr. Keighley asked a question about the lady getting down. We zip line down in the morning, somehow they have to be able to get this back up. And I guess we have a lot of hunters around here. These people are, you know, you can't keep everybody out, but how do you protect the county after hours when somebody just... It's inevitable, I guess, so to speak.
Sure. Well, I will say, we have not had an issue with people accessing the course overnight. To answer the question about how we bring the course back down, basically what they do is they ascend the zip line. So they do the course in reverse, so they basically ascend a 750 to 1,000-foot zip line, and then they will put the course down. This is, you know, bringing our cars and swings down to the proper height, also then lowering the ladders in the evening. We understand completely that, you know, folks might be interested in accessing the course. That's why we build our stockades. They do have a gated entry, so we are able to prevent it from people accessing at that point.
Commissioner Price.
Thank you. My question, Kathy.
Approximately, how much area is this going to take up at Poston Park? And did you have anything else planned for the space that GoApe is tentatively going to use?
I think it's about 1 to 3 acres. Is that, am I correct?
It's a little bit more than that. It's about 5 to 6 acres is what we use, as far as land. That is not exclusive use of the land, so we won't harm your trails that are currently out there. You know, the lake trail, folks will still be able to access that without a problem. We only restrict access at our entry points and exit points, so that would be your landing zones for your zip line, and then also the gated entry for the rope ladders.
So to answer your question, we will keep the amenities we already have out there. It's not going to influence, you know, our trails down there. We'll have trails underneath where people who can use the trails and, you know, look up and see the zip line there. That's what we have in the area that we're considering, and we haven't planned anything else in that area, just because the terrain and the trails are already there. So this would just give us another amenity, you know, on the same piece of property.
And no conflict with what we already have?
No.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Got a couple of questions. I did a quick, I'll be honest with you, when I saw this one agenda, I had no idea what GoApe was.
Okay.
So I did a quick Google search of GoApe, and I think every TripAdvisor review I saw had five stars.
Yes, sir.
I mean, everybody absolutely loved this course and the experience, and just reading what they put was really exciting. And so I know some of that's pretty tough, and you go with something like TripAdvisor. You know, you could have somebody with bad experiences, and it could still be a nice thing, but every one I saw was a five-star experience. So when I looked at what you put in here, you know, where it had 73% would recommend, 60% would visit again, that actually seems pretty conservative from what I read. And again, that's not scientific by any means, but I will say that. I mean, when I read those reviews, I was very impressed, for whatever that's worth. And you can talk about it if you want.
Yeah, and thank you for going on Yelp. You know, they are one of our toughest critics, because that is the public that is coming out to the course. You know, some of our stiffest competition is up in Williamsburg, Virginia, and we're going against Colonial Williamsburg, we're going against Great Wolf Lodge, those type of competitors up there, and we're continually ranked in the top there. So thank you.
Well, I just got back from Great Wolf Lodge about an hour ago, so I can speak to that. The question I had is, first of all, this escalating fee based off gross revenue, is that what you offer the other counties? Is this a standard fee?
Yes, sir. Yes, those are our standard fees. You know, we did also include in your proposal a guaranteed payment of $10,000. You know, but as you can see by our first-year projection, we are well above that. We're right around $21,000, $22,000 in projected revenue for the county of the first year. We do that, one, to aid in a little bit of assurance for the park system that we're serious about the project. But two, also, we do the escalating cost, escalating revenue share, I should say, because it also, it develops a better partnership for the park system and for GoApe. We want you guys to be a partner of ours in that you're promoting this activity out there at the course, but then also, we're promoting the park system. You'll see by the proposal, we estimate about $100,000 a year in marketing for the park system, and that is coming directly from GoApe, so.
Okay. And so I think my only concern is, you know, we go with something like this, and then you go to Augusta, Georgia, and, you know, they get a much better deal than what we got, and then somebody catches wind of it, and they come to us and say, hey, why did we not try to negotiate a better deal?
Sure.
But if this is a standard one, I can appreciate that, but, you know, I think we would want some protection that somebody doesn't do a simple Google search and find that there's other counties that are getting a much better deal.
Sure, and I understand that. And obviously, those type of items can be negotiated through the contract, as far as stipulations, proximity, and revenue share, and things of that nature. So we're happy to address those concerns.
Okay. And you mentioned the adult trail being 10 and over. Is there another trail?
We do. We have a small, it's a junior course that we offer in Williamsburg, Virginia. It's for, we actually don't have an age limit on it. It's a height limit of 3 feet, 3 inches and up. And so we offer that in Williamsburg, Virginia, for youngers.
Okay, okay. And so if, I'll ask Ms. Hart here in a second, but what would be the next steps if this board, and obviously, the Parks and Rec Board decided to partner with you? What are the next steps that we would do?
Well, the Parks and Rec Board has endorsed this unanimously and turned it over to you guys for, hopefully, your support as well. And also, I forgot to mention that tourism, travel and tourism, has seen this proposal. Our rep on the tourism board presented this to them. They've also endorsed it unanimously. So now, we come to you and, you know, ask if you're comfortable or interested in supporting it, and possibly, we could bring you a board action, you know, as soon as you're ready for it. Or if you need more information, we're glad to gather that as well.
Okay, but assuming we are, what kind of timeline do we have, I think is what?
Sure. As far as timeline goes, and thank you for the question, we would basically be looking at a spring 2016 opening. We do that because we like to design the course when the leaves are off the tree, because that provides us with better sightlines and better, just gives us a better perspective of the park. I was out at the park today, and I was looking around. It'd be very difficult to design a course right now with this, the leaves that are in the tree and the understory. So we would look to design somewhere, you know, October, early November, and then build over the winter, and then be ready for pretty much an April 1 opening.
Okay, so this is a pretty firm proposal. You're not considering other sites? You guys are interested in Poston Park, assuming that we are?
Yes, assuming that you are, we are very interested in the park. You know, it offers a lot of great amenities out there. One, you know, being the hiking and biking trails. The, I guess I've been out there about three or four times now, and every time I've been out there, it's been very active with people out there, and that's always great to see. But also, you know, one of the nice things is, it would offer a lot of excitement out there, because like our course in Delaware, we'd be able to cross water. We'd be able to zip line and cross water, so that'd add a lot of excitement to the participant in their experience.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Well, to start out, I'm chairman of the Proprieties Committee for Piedmont Council Board of Scouts, and we have a Cope course, similar to what you're talking about. But we don't use the trees for most of ours. We use very special-treated poles. In fact, we had to replace them three, four, five years ago, maybe. I thought the poles were perfect, but we have outside inspectors to come in and certify our site. They come each year and inspect it. That's my first question, is, you know, do you have anybody other than in-house inspectors? And the other is, the people that operate that course are trained and certified in that before they let any of our scouts get on it?
Sure. So to answer the first question about the course inspections, one, we'll follow all, you know, county, state requirements for the course. Secondly, we follow ACCT standards and also ASTM standards, and those are the two predominant, you know, agencies that will regulate the zip line activities and adventure course activities. So we follow their standards closely, and we bring out inspectors on an annual basis to look at the courses. I don't like to guarantee whether it's ACCT or ASTM, because that is also regulated by the state. So if the state prefers one over the other, we would follow those inspection guidelines for that point. As far as our inspectors, or, I'm sorry, instructors, one, we have, you know, a 13-year history of, and safety record that goes along with GoApe. We've had over 5 million visitors through our courses. So first, our instructors are certified by GoApe. They go through a very intense two-week course, and, you know, at that point, then they're ready to be instructors. We also rescue train them, so they're trained by the same folks that will train your local SWAT teams, firefighters, police officers, things of that nature. And then finally, they are CPR certified for course rescues.
Well, although, saying the very... Well, although it's in a very wooded area, we do use the big, heavy poles. It's really extras treated and inspected and special. And rather than using trees, I just wondered if you do some of that because, Tracy's the arbist here, but I would be concerned about permanent damage to some of the trees.
Sure, and I understand. And I'm happy to provide a tree study that our partner in the UK has done. We've been on over 900 trees through all of our courses, and we haven't had any issues with any of the trees that we've been on, but I'm happy to provide the tree study that was completed.
Okay.
So, and to answer your question about the pole-based courses, if there's ever a need for us to put in a pole, we'd do so, but mostly it would be just done as an anchor point. We like to really be more of an activity that gets folks out into the trees, into nature, and into the environment.
Thank you. I have just a couple of questions. How much will the ticket sell for?
Sure. The tickets sell for, it's $37 for children that are the 10 to 15 range, and then $57 for 15 and up, I'm sorry, 16 and up. Keep in mind, those are our rack rates. Our average ticket price is around $44, and we offer discounts either through our social media pages or also then through the community. We'll offer those discounts as well.
And it's a 3-hour course?
It's about 2 to 3 hours, yes, sir.
And how many parking spaces will it need? We have other people that use the park, you know, will this take up all the parking spaces? What are we talking about?
No, and in talking to Kathy, we would, you know, with what is projected in the master plan of the park, we would be fine with parking. We look for about 20 to 25 spaces at our peak times. What we do is through our booking system, and about 90% of our folks do book online, we actually regulate it to where the number of people that are coming out to the course at any one time. I always like to refer to the golf reference. So, basically, you know, during the week, we have an hourly session times, and then that allows for 14 people on the course per hour. And then on the weekends, we allow for session times that are spread at 30 minutes. We do that for the guest experience because, like I mentioned about golf, the worst thing about golf is when you're standing on the tee box constantly and you're waiting for somebody to clear the fairway. So, we do this to regulate the flow of folks going through the course, but then also to regulate the amount of traffic that is coming into the park at any one time.
And, excuse me, Tracy, if I could add, we are coming to you at the voting meeting this month with a request to award a bid to expand our parking out there. Currently, we only have 30 spaces, so we're very limited. You're exactly right with our existing activities, but with the expansion, we're going to add 70 more spaces. So, we should be able to provide parking for everybody that is using the park now, and hopefully he would use it with GO-AP.
Okay. I like the idea. I think it's great. It falls within the priorities that are set by this board when we talk about improving community health, getting folks active, getting folks moving. I really like the idea. Unless there's something that the county attorney tells us eventually as far as insurance-wise or something that I don't know, I would definitely lean towards supporting. Let me ask you this, as far as schools, Gaston County schools, would you offer any discounts? Is that something we can negotiate upfront within your contract?
Yes, sir, absolutely. We could certainly do that. We do offer, like I mentioned before, part of our tickets, you know, are designated for, you know, however the county would like to see them used. So, you know, if you'd like to see, you know, special discounts go to certain groups, we'd be happy to accommodate that. Free tickets for some groups. We also do offer discounts for, you know, firefighters, police officers, and other public servants to come out to the course.
I definitely would like to see something with our public school system or any, you know, school for that matter.
Yeah, and we'd be happy to negotiate that through the contract.
Okay. That's it? Thank you for your time. Joe, do you have a question?
I support the idea. I'm familiar with it. I only ask that you let the other members of this board give it a tryout first.
That is not a problem. We'd be happy to have you all out to the course and give you first access.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Price wants to know, do you give senior citizen discounts as well?
That can be negotiated through the contract. I'll leave that up to the board.
I'm just glad you have a 3-foot park. You know, I'm excited. But thank you for coming. I think this is good for Gaston County. Again, it fits within our priorities. It does bring income back into the park, supported by the Parks and Rec Board, Travel and Tourism Board. I think it's a good thing. I think it's a win.
Great. Well, thank you all very much for your time, and if you have any other questions, please feel free to ask Kathy, and she can relay them to me or contact me directly.
Okay. I would like, when you, if the board action is brought to us as far as the contract, we would like to put something in for our school system because I do see that we can get a lot of kids out there. Let me ask you this, will you have a concession stand, a place for people to have picnics and things of that nature? Because if you had a 3rd grade come out there, other than just going through, you know, the course, would they have a place to eat, have lunch, or anything like that?
Well, we wouldn't offer full concessions. What we typically offer is, are the basics, being watered, Gatorade, power bars, things of that nature, just for a quick snack. But the nice thing is, the park offers, you know, great shelters for them to have other picnics in and things of that nature. So, we would partner with the park system, you know, if you guys charge rental fees for those shelters and that nature.
I would see as a revenue source, if you get a ton of people coming in and out there, having a concession stand.
Sure.
A revenue source for the county.
Absolutely.
Or something that you bid out to someone.
Yeah, and we could certainly, you know, talk about that in the future.
At your other places, do you all have any type?
Not GO-AP directly. We've never, you know, done that directly ourselves. We've always just done like the small concessions, but our partners have brought in food trucks, they've brought in ice cream trucks, things of that nature. So, it's been something that our partner has worked to bring in.
Okay. Kathy, on that, I think we need to look different with that because that concession is already on a bid process out there, so we'd need to not put that involved with that.
Yeah. If we decided to do that in the future, we can make that as part of the contracted concessions that we have out there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Great. Thank you all very much for your time this evening, and have a wonderful week.
Thank you.
Our next item is a Gaston College budget request, including the Center for Advanced Manufacturing. Ms. Patricia Skinner, President.
Thank you, Chairman Philbeck. Commissioners and ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about Gaston College. We do have our board chair with us tonight, and I wanted to recognize him. James Smith is with us. And we have several members of our faculty and staff with us as well. If I would ask them to please stand. Thank you. Good to go. Thank you. Appreciate the technical support. I am here this evening on behalf of Gaston College to appeal to you to fully fund the operating budget, to fund the special one-time request for $500,000 to help equip our Center for Advanced Manufacturing, and to fully fund the capital budget of Gaston College. First of all, with our operating budget, we are grateful for the county for fully funding our operating budget last year, and we're requesting a modest increase this year of 1.71% for 2015 to 16. This increase would fund a 2% salary increase, an anticipated increase in state retirement plan expense, and some operating expense increases. As you might recall, I appeared before you in January 2015 to request your support of a special one-time funding of $500,000 to help equip the new Center for Advanced Manufacturing, which will be under construction from summer 2015 to summer 2016. New learning labs within the center will include instructional spaces for nuclear, CAD, instrumentation, robotics, mechatronics, chemical plastics, alternative energy, and industrial systems programs. There will also be a centrally located integrated lab to simulate a real-world working environment. In summary, of the nearly $12 million total project cost for the renovation of the FAR building and the construction of the new Center for the Advanced Manufacturing, just over $3.2 million is still needed in order for Gaston College to fully meet the training needs of the manufacturing community. As you know, the first phase of the FAR renovation has been completed. We have doubled our capacity to teach welding students, and we've raised the capacity to teach machining students by 50% by adding a new state-of-the-art advanced machining area. Some of you have had the opportunity to visit and tour these renovated areas, and we would welcome the rest of you to come to see the renovation when your schedule permits. Here are some before and after pictures of the renovated spaces. On the left-hand side is the PTI lobby before and after. And on the next slide is the CNC machining. The left side is before, and the right side is after. This is the former HVAC area on the left side, which is now welding area, which provides many more stations than we had in the past. This is the former HVAC classroom on the left and a new CNC classroom on the right. Construction of the second phase of the FAR renovation will take place from June 2015 to February 2016. It will provide enhanced labs for electrical and HVAC students, a renovated automotive classroom, ADA-compliant restrooms, and offices reconfigured to support the learning environment. Funds are in place for construction. We now need resources to provide the most advanced equipment for teaching and learning. Facilities equipped with state-of-the-art machinery will allow more people to be trained and will attract the best and brightest students to consider careers in manufacturing. So, we are building for the future of Gaston County. We recognize that over the past several years, budgets have been tight for everyone. While the overall North Carolina Community College System budget has held relatively steady over the past 5 years, Gaston College has experienced a 12.7% decrease in its operating budget from the state since 2010 and 11. And additionally, while the county approved an additional $145,000 in capital funds to the college in December 2013, cumulatively, the county has reduced capital funding to the college by $879,300 over the last 5 years. The result of these decreases has been a tightened belt that is not allowed for equipment purchases. In years past, we were able to reserve equipment funds for new projects such as the Center for Advanced Manufacturing, but with no funds to expend, there are none to reserve. So, Gaston College respectfully requests a one-time restoration of capital funds in the amount of $500,000 for the express purpose of helping to equip the Center for Advanced Manufacturing. As you probably know, North Carolina was recently named by Site Selection Magazine as the top state for recruiting new plants in 2014. North Carolina Commerce Secretary John Scovarla cited our superior tax and regulatory environment, our highly skilled workforce, and our outstanding quality of life as major contributing factors to this rating. So, the $500,000 investment we're asking you to make would go a long ways toward meeting the long-term training needs of our community and help to bolster a bright economic development future in attracting new businesses and retaining existing businesses in our county. Finally, we respectfully request that the county restore the historical funding of $697,000 for the capital repair budget for the college. Our immediate repair list includes 2 roof replacements for sections of the Roush Building and the FAR Building, and an ADA-compliant elevator for the Myers Center. Our student affairs division is located on the 2nd floor of the Myers Center and is one of the most heavily visited departments on campus. The current elevator was installed in 1977 and is too small to accommodate today's power chairs and other mobility devices. If our county budget, capital budget continues to be funded at the reduced level of the approximately $450,000 versus the historical level of $697,000, we will continue to add to a backlog of deferred maintenance items. As you know, many of our buildings were constructed in the 1960s and 70s and they do require new roofs and chillers. Several of our oldest buildings require new ADA-compliant elevators to provide full access to all of our students. The inability to complete maintenance on our facilities now may result in emergency replacements and costlier repairs in the future. Our program offerings have grown 42% since 2006, where we have gone from 92 programs of study to 131 different options for citizens to study for job attainment or enhancement. We have recently made several program additions in systems technology and engineering areas, including associate in engineering and associate in manufacturing technology degrees. We are introducing a new apprenticeship program this fall in collaboration with our area industry partners. We currently have 5 manufacturers committed to this project with 4 more expressing significant A recent economic impact analysis was completed by an outside firm for all the colleges in North Carolina for the 2012 to 13 fiscal period. And you do have a summary report that I gave you. It's a 2-page summary which shows the results for Gaston College, and I have just 2 slides from that summary that I wanted to share with you. First is that the total income added to our region by Gaston College included operations spending, excuse me, of $41.6 million, and the accumulated contribution of former students added income of $209.3 million. So, the total income impact of $250.9 million equals 3.1% of the region's gross regional So, the return on investments to students, to society, and to taxpayers is substantial. For every $1 spent on education at Gaston College, students will gain $2 in lifetime income. Society will gain $6.70 in added state income and social savings, and taxpayers will gain $3.30 in added taxes and public sector savings. So, Gaston College is grateful to the taxpayers of Gaston County and to the commissioners for the funding needed to maintain and operate quality facilities as well as to provide for the safety and security of our students. So, in summary, I respectfully request that the commissioners fully fund our operating and capital request as well as our one-time special request of $500,000 for the Center for Advanced Manufacturing. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Skinner.
You're welcome.
19 and 20, those slides are really good. The return on investment, I've not seen that. That's actually very impressive to actually see that in numbers and to know the total impact and the percentage of this region that you guys have had a hand in. I've got 2 quick questions for you. The first would be, the $500,000 for equipping the Center for Advanced Manufacturing, if we do that, when do you guys plan on equipping that? When will that be ready for use?
The plan is that it will be ready next summer and to offer classes in the fall of 2016.
Okay. And the only other thing is, what type of job placement percentage do we have for somebody that enters that program? Do we think...
Well, right now, we have more employers asking for students to graduate from jobs than we have jobs available. And I think Virgil can tell you that in our, in all of our engineering technology programs, sometimes they don't finish the program because they get a job offer. We know that Owens Corning, which is gearing up right now, they want all of their employees that they hired to have at least an associate degree. They're looking at associate degrees in mechatronics and mechanical systems and the very areas that we are going to be training people for.
So, this isn't a degree, like a degree in philosophy? When somebody goes in here, they're going to walk out with a job waiting on them?
With a skill, that's correct. Right.
Okay. Pretty impressive. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Price.
Thank you. Dr. Skinner, have you heard any kind of financial assistance out of Raleigh? Or do they treat all community colleges the same with a equal share of financial support?
Well, at this point, we do not receive any capital funding. We haven't since the bond referendum of 2000. So, we do not get regular capital funds from the state. The last big funding we got was through our local bond referendum that you all helped us pass here in 2006. Now, we do understand that there might be a bond coming down from the governor this coming fall, but my understanding is that's going to be for new projects. coming fall, but my understanding is that's going to be for new projects, not existing projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Skinner, for coming out tonight. I guess my question is, how far have we reached out to the automation world to see who is willing? Because I know a lot of those people are putting new machines out, and they're willing to partner with someone who's not making a profit off it like you wouldn't be for what you're doing. But I guess the biggest thing I wanted to say is, where have we reached out? Have we started reaching out to see if anybody for those machines would want? Because like I said, I know we partner with a lot of my personal jobs, so I didn't know if maybe the schools were doing that as well.
We have reached out to a number of companies. We've reached out to companies in the technology park. We know we have commitments from a couple of companies right now that have equipment they would like us to use. And Virgil was just telling me today about another company that's going to have some potential equipment. And if that meets the need, then that gets crossed off the list as one less thing that we have to purchase. But we are going to companies to see if they can help us. And we're also asking for donations as well.
I also think, not to look at the ones that we're going forward, but the ones we already have in place.
Right.
I think a lot of those CNC machines can... I know there's a program out there with one particular company right now who's building big projects, who is willing to partner with that. And I'll talk to you about that later. But I just wanted to mention that to...
That'd be great.
Try to get together on those. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Well, Dr. Skinner, thank you. You know that I support the college, and I think I recognize as much as anybody on this board that it is important for our citizen to get the training and education they need to fulfill these jobs and match up with them with the Corning's and the Lanxess and others that we've been able to recruit. And I believe, when I was over there touring the FAR building, I believe Virgil Cox told me that there's already, what, a thousand or so jobs going unsealed by local industry? And that, we had a little discussion about trying to get counselors into the high schools or maybe even the middle school and trying to get students on a track to, education track, that there's great opportunities for them. They don't have to flip burgers, so to speak. They can have a very decent job, and this education is going to determine their lifestyle probably the rest of their life. So I fully support this. I know that this advanced manufacturing is different from what manufacturing used to be because they can be working with computers and robotics. So I support this for the college.
We have a program already with the high schools with our welding program. We have the Career in College Promise program, and we have quite a number of high school students that are taking welding right now. And then hopefully, when they're finished with high school, we'll come back to take more of the welding courses. So we're starting to try to get the high schools more involved while they're in high school to get them interested in that track. We've also had a couple of manufacturing expos again to let students know that it's very different in the manufacturing environment today than it was 10 or 15 years ago. So we are really trying to get that interest and get them on campus to see the differences.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Skinner. Also, I'd like to remind the public that this weekend is the upcoming 50th Year Gala at Gaston College, and I think there is some tickets still available.
There are.
If I'm correct. So I'd like to let folks know that. I'll just say two things. One, I fully support the advanced manufacturing without a doubt. It needs to be done. At whatever level, it has to be funded. I think that's something we have to be forward-thinking on. So as you see needs arise, that you think that we can be at the forefront of keeping our workers the ability to get the skills they need to match up with jobs. All it's going to do is hopefully create, you know, more interest in companies wanting to come here. That's the big payoff. And currently, from what I hear through EDC circles and companies that we talk to, we don't have an issue of lack of jobs. And even in this economy, and it's not exactly where it should be yet, the issue is finding people that has the skills to do that. So I 100% support that Gaston College and its efforts. So I'd like to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Skinner.
Thank you.
Now, our next item is animal control presentation. Dr. Christine Blankenship, Animal Control Director. Dr. Blankenship?
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank you all for having us here tonight so we can share a little bit about where our Animal Control Division is currently and where we plan on going. In the presentation, I set it up to show some of the strengths that we've identified in the Animal Control Division and some of the challenges that we've identified and how we plan to address some of those challenges, what we've done now and what we're planning on doing in the future. Some of the strengths that we've identified, by far, the first one is going to be the employees of Gaston County Animal Control. They are some of the most compassionate, caring people that I've ever been pleasure to work with. They are hardworking. They smile. They try to be professional when they're being called dog catchers or poop scoopers or many other things, unfortunately. Also, our dedicated field operations specialist. They are always professional and have a wonderful attitude, even with the overwhelming call volume that they face on a daily basis. The next strength would be, of course, would be Gaston County Police Department. They have shown an unwavering amount of support for us, and they've shown courage to actually see our world through our side of the fence. And they have been wonderful in helping us and trying to help us move this division on to where we really think that it should be and we could make it be. And then the last would be our placement partners that have helped us so much to find homes for over thousands of animals in this county and get them into good homes and put them into permanent families. So our placement partners have been extremely important in that process, and we value their dedication to that. Some of the challenges, however, that we have identified, one in terms of the shelter operations, has been a kind of a culture shift for them. We are moving towards a new era in animal control or animal care facilities. They have met that with definitely open arms, but our number of staff is not proportional for the amount of work that is required for them. We've done manpower studies, and it's amazing how hard they work with no breaks and still get the job done and do it with a smile. Other things is we identified that we need some additional training. So training that is actually going to meet the contemporary procedures and the requirements that animal control facilities now are kind of moving towards. So we are working on some programs to try to get some of that additional training for them. The second challenge we have identified has been the failure to recoup our money back. We have, over the past 10 years, we actually have over $700,000 that we have not been able to collect from citations for reclaim, such things. So that money, it could be really important and helpful for us to try to set up some of the new programs that we're looking into and to help us offset some of the costs that it takes to actually run that shelter. The third challenge would be our adoption and our placement partner programs. We've had a... There's a paradigm shift that's been going on in animal control and humane society organizations all across the country. And we really want to move forward and be able to get these animals, the adoptable animals, the great animals, find them homes, find them good permanent homes. But our staffing does provide a bit of a... Kind of hurts us a little bit because of the quality of service that we can actually provide for the citizens of Gaston County and also for our placement partners. Our outdated policies and procedures for the placement partners has definitely created some conflict for us. That is something that I'll address in a little bit in terms of how we're addressing that type of issue. The fourth challenge we have identified has been the field operations area, and Captain Jones is going to address that.
Good evening. I'm Captain Steve Gents. I'm currently assigned to the Field Operations Section of the County Police Animal Control Division. Currently, the Field Operations has nine non-sworn specialists, two sergeants, and myself assigned. Coming from the county police side, the policing side of the department, I wasn't fully aware of the challenges that the specialists faced each day. And what came out first and foremost to me was the call volume that Dr. Blankenship referred to. Year-to-date, we're averaging approximately roughly 1,200 calls per month for service for the specialist. It's an overwhelming number that they're really just trying to keep their head above water and answer these calls in a professional, competent manner without them backlogging and stacking up. A negative side effect of that call log and that call volume is a lack of proactivity. We're completely reactive right now on the specialist side. We cannot go out and be proactive in the community simply because we're answering so many calls. That's something that we're working on going forward. A second striking thing to me was the similarity between the law enforcement officers and the specialists. Our specialists are investigative in nature. They answer calls for service. They investigate county ordinance violations and state law violations and state statute violations. They conduct interviews. They complete case investigations, interview suspects, and at times, they'll actually complete search warrants and execute search warrants during the investigative process. The only difference between the specialists and the law enforcement officers that we have are they are non-sworn, and they have not received the level of training that the police officers have. One of the things going forward that we're going to focus on is giving these specialists the training in the investigative process they need to do their job competently and professionally. They've done a great job up till now. We think they can only get better with increased training. We've also initiated a complete review of the Field Operations Division from the ground up. The ultimate goal is to find things that we can get better at. One of the defining characteristics of the County Police Department is that we're always trying to get better. Whether we've done a good job or not, we're always wanting to improve. I think that holds true for the specialists in the Field Operations Section as well as the Shelter Operations, the Animal Control Division as a whole, as well as the entire County Police Department. That's what we plan on doing going forward.
I'll now move on to kind of some of the improvements that we have made since I have come in since January. In terms of shelter operations, we... The day I started, I implemented daily rounds. So I walk through with one of the kennel aides or this shelter supervisor, and we look at every single animal that is in that shelter, and we monitor them for disease. We monitor them for how they're handling the stress. Are they able to handle the amount of stress that they're experiencing inside that shelter? And if the animals are sick or they're starting to come down with some type of infectious disease, we do put them on antibiotics. We come up with a treatment plan, decide what we can do and what we can't do. And that's been very beneficial for those animals and for the staff itself to say, you know what? We are moving beyond just managing the animals. Now let's take care of them and try to find these guys permanent homes. Let's place the ones that we can place. Other things we have done is we developed a treatment area. We took an old specialist office, and we made that into a pseudo-treatment room. And that's an area where we can put sick cats. We can use it for any type of wound cleaning, any type of physical exams, any kind of medical treatment that we need, we think we can do for those animals. We actually do it in a specialized area. And that's been very helpful, and it gets the animals out of the kennel and actually into a more quiet environment so that we can assess them more appropriately. Other things we've done has modified the cleaning protocols. The state is very clear in terms of how often we need to clean the shelter. They don't tell us how to do it. They just say we have to do it twice a day. And I went through and we worked through the cleaning procedure, and I said, you know, maybe there's some different ways that we can do this to try to decrease the infectious component of an animal shelter. We won't be able to ever eliminate it, but we can definitely minimize it. So we have modified some of the cleaning protocols to try to make it easier on the staff, but much more efficient in doing actually what the cleaning is supposed to be doing, so decreasing the infectious pathogens that are there. We've also are working on complying with... Are improving our compliance with state and federal regulations. So we are working towards not just keeping into day-to-day, but we're also going, what is the big picture? Let's make sure that when the state inspector comes in, it's more of a meet and greet as opposed to us waiting to be punished. And so we're working very hard to try to get all of our state and federal regulations, make sure that they are up to par, and we never have to worry about scrambling to get anything done. It's already done. That's a daily operation for us. Other things is we are developing training opportunities and a training manual, so not only for the field operations specialists, but also for the shelter staff, so for the kennel aides. I have gotten ideas from them in terms of what types of training that they need, what types of training they would like. I also have a list of trainings that I think that everybody needs to go through to make sure everybody is in the same place and also try to continue education. Once they get the training, we also need to continue to change and continue to adjust to the ways the shelter medicine is going. So we really need to be able to train these guys and provide it. If I can provide the training, I will. If someone is more qualified outside of our shelter, then we will definitely recruit those types of people and have them come in, have the experts teach these guys so we can be an exceptional facility and get these guys the gratification that they really deserve. Other things that we are doing is we're going through the operating procedures manual. So that is in a process. So we are going through the entire operations manual of the shelter and of the field operations, and we are hoping to have a template of that done in about a month or so, which is a bit of a daunting process. So we are working hard on that. In terms of receiving payments or monies that we haven't been able to collect, currently alls we do is we do send late reminders, so 30, 60, 90, 120-day late reminders. Every month, we send them out. We also do send some things off to a collection agency. But unfortunately, with the number of over $700,000 that we have not gotten back, we need to reevaluate and say, okay, are there better options for us to try to recoup some of this money? That would definitely help the shelter. It would relieve the budget of the county because we would be getting some of that... We'd be getting more money back. So we are currently looking into, how can we make this better? How can we get some of this money back? And then last is our adoption and our placement partner programs. Our goal is to improve the relationship with all of the placement partner businesses and all the animal rescue businesses. We have developed a policy and procedures manual for placement partners, and that will soon be released. We have worked hard on that to get that completed so that there is a standard set of policies and procedures. We've worked hard with surrounding counties to get their input and their ideas and what they did, what worked, what didn't work for them. So we kind of came up with our own little policy. We also are developing community education programs. We can't... Unfortunately, animal control facilities, I don't think are going to go away. We still have a lot of irresponsible pet owners, and we really need to get out there and start educating people in terms of what is responsible pet ownership. And we're going to start out with something as simple as, you know, what is animal control? Who are we? And then cover the ordinances and say, okay, now we have that. Now let's talk about, should you get a pet? What's the best pet for you if you want to get a pet? And what are you looking at in terms of, you adopt a pet, you get a cat, what are you looking at every month? What are you looking at for a year? What type of preventative medicine do you need to do for your pet to make sure it's a member of your family and it's going to stay healthy? We also are increasing our community events in terms of what we participate in. We've had an amazing response from the staff that... At the shelter, at the Just Playing Dog Show, everybody that was working that day was at the Just Playing Dog Show, and we were just... They were checking tags, and we were just out there to help educate people and to be there and realize that we are there to help. We want to educate these people, and that's what we're there for. We're there to help, and that's what we want everybody to realize. So we're getting out there, trying to get ourselves out there, educate all these people. And then a new facility would definitely help us. The facility currently, right now, we know is older. It was meant... When it was built, it was meant to just control animals. Now we are in a different era, and shelters in general are not only there to take in the unwanted pets, but it's also to get them more exposure, get the community involved, get your volunteers involved, get these animals adopted. And I think that in the future with the new facility, that is definitely going to help us. That's going to hopefully help with the adoptions that occur within the county and also with our placement of our pets from the placement partners.
Commissioner Price.
Dr. Blankenship, are you... You mentioned the word volunteers. Are you able to use or in need of volunteers to help with the workload, and are volunteers limited as to what they can and can't do due to liability issues?
They do sign liability waivers. We have an orientation program for volunteers, and a lot of what the volunteers help us is the ones that do participate. They can help us clean, so clean the bowls and help clean the kennels and things. They do take animals from kennels or cages if people want to walk them or someone wants to interact with the animal, they help with that. We've also had them now set up things. We give a lot of kongs to the dogs, which are hard rubber toys, but we stuff them with things like peanut butter and cheese whiz, and we put them in the freezer. things like peanut butter and cheese whiz, and we put them in the freezer. And that's an enrichment for the animal. It kind of gives them something to think about besides being in a kennel with a bunch of loud animals, you know, a bunch of pit bulls barking at you and stuff like that. So we have them get those things ready, and then we can go through and say, okay, this one gets one, this one, this one gets one. So it's actually, they've been helpful. What we found out, though, is that a lot of the volunteers, they get very excited about it, and then they start to slowly dwindle. We have about 10 volunteers that actively do come throughout the year. Some come three or four times a week, others come maybe once a month, maybe once every six months. So I think it's a hard environment for a lot of people to be in. That's not, it's not all puppies and kittens, I like to say.
How do you recruit volunteers?
We do, we do some. We do in terms of, we go to community events. We have brochures. It's on our website, and we talk to the community, things such as that. The Vet Tech program has been really supportive in terms of trying to get some volunteers. So we're spending more, since we're spending more time at community events, trying to get the word out that, you know, we want volunteers and we want people to come and see who we are and help us take care of these animals.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Blankenship. I guess I have a slew of questions. They're going to go from one end of the spectrum to the other. But first of all, thank you for your time. I guess my first question is, what are the hours of operation and how many Saturdays do we are in business each day?
Currently, our hours of operation are a little bit varied. On Monday through Wednesday, we're open. The shelters actually opens at eight, but we're open to the public from 11 until 6:00. So Monday through Wednesday. On Thursday and Friday, we're open for the public 11 until 5:00. And then the first Saturday of every month, we're open from 10 until 2:00.
One thing I would like to suggest is we put that, I don't know if it is on the website with the gentleman in the back, try to get them that information. They can put that out there. So that is out there and displayed, and we keep that as a rolling practice. I guess I had the chance to talk to a young lady who was from, I don't know where she was from, but I talked to her for over two hours today about this, some of the issues that are happening out there. And it looks like to me, some of our programs are very good in nature. I think some of them we need to work on as far as how we maybe communicate through some of our people, and I think that's the education that you guys have talked about. What is our cost to these rescues or and/or the adoptions? Are they, is that where the fee comes out? I used to have on the sign in Dallas what the adoption fee was.
The adoptions to citizens who come and adopt, they actually pay $90 for a dog and $75 for a cat. And it's a heck of a bargain because they actually, the animals are then taken to a veterinary practice that participates in our spay neuter, in our adoption program, and they get their first set of vaccinations. They get spayed and neutered. And then that's pretty cheap for, if you think of a dog, $90 for a spay or neuter in their first set of vaccinations is pretty inexpensive for them. In terms of our placement partners, they don't pay anything. They actually get the animals. We vaccinate them for them, and then they take the animals. So they actually do not pay us a fee.
How long do we keep the dogs as a general rule when they come in? If it's something that's of someone who is going to rescue a dog for the most part, not the adoption part?
In general, if it's a stray animal, so we don't know the owner, it's a mandatory 72-hour hold. If it's an animal that was an owner surrender, so an owner actually signed the paperwork and signed the animal over to us, that animal's immediately available. We try very hard to try to keep the animals as long as we have space and as long as the animal is healthy and that the animal's handling the stress. So we try to keep them in general. Once they hit 10 days, that's a long time for an animal to be in a shelter.
I spoke with the young lady today. She said I think the adoption fee for her company was a little over $200. Is that general practice? Are they, they all claim nonprofit, but I saw some staggering figures today that were sort of off the charts for me. Is that something?
I think it's a nonprofit, it depends on the individual organization. They do charge considerably for their adoptions. I hear, I've heard $125 for an adoption for one of their animals, all the way up to $200. I think every organization is structured differently. They do receive pledges. They receive donations from people across the country, people within the immediate area. And I know of some personally that receive discounted services at veterinary clinics for the animals. Some of the organizations actually pay their foster homes. So when they have, they take the animals and put them in foster until they can get them to transport. They actually paid them to take care of those animals, and the highest I heard was $2,400 a month as a foster.
I've seen some rather large figures in a million dollars. From the person I spoke with today, their actual company was over $10,000. So I'm sure that's not everybody in between. But like I said, what I would like to see from my vantage point off me on the board is how can we become the word partners and where we want to work with them, they want to work with us? I know it's got to come through education somehow. Is there a way? Because we keep hearing, oh, we just missed this dog. We just missed this dog. I've heard that prior to you coming to where there's a five-day or 72-hour hold. All of a sudden, they call and put the hold on the dog, and then all of a sudden, they don't come at the 72nd hour. It moves into 10 days. And that's where the staggering amount comes for us. I understand that.
Yeah. We, our new policy that we've come up with for the placement partners will clarify a lot of that. And I think we have been lacking in written policy, and so now we have one implemented. We are planning on doing away with the holds, and the reason mainly is because the animals do. They may put a hold on them, but we've had animals that have been in there for two, three weeks, and they haven't picked them up yet, but they still have a hold on them. So then we get, we are not allowed to do anything with that animal because that person has a hold on it. So we revamped and we kind of evaluated what would be the easiest and what would be the best for the animals, what would be best for the placement partners, for us to have a good, very clear set rules and say, this is how we think we should go with it. And so we're going to set a time, we're going to set it pretty much 10 days. And if we can keep the animals for 10 days, depending on space, the health of the animal, then we will keep them for 10 days. But it would be more of, if they want it, they can come and get it.
And one last thing I'd like to say, and I know we can do it through IT. Somehow get a mailbox that has a suggestion box through animal control. And basically what that is, is for the people on the outside who want to complain or say, how we get these suggestions implemented in a timely fashion where we can be cordial about it. I think some of them don't become cordial. And the reason I say this is because I talked to her for two hours today. She was as nice as she could be. But she told me some of the other benefactors of what they do. So that's why I wanted to suggest that, and you have that. You can suggest it to me if you don't feel comfortable with the emails. I want to see them or whatever you do because we need to find a way. And I thank you for your service. I know it's not fun. I can guarantee you that. And Chief Bowie has really set me down a few times in the past, and we've gone over how this works. And so I commend you for your job and what you do, and Captain Gents as well, and your staff.
Thank you.
But also, I want to work with the citizens and how we can try to partner with each other and be true partners.
Yep. I think that would be great.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Dr. Blankenship, I want to thank you for the improvements you're making. I think we were going to, we're going to get to a very good operation there. I've been on the board a long time, and I remember when we used to have over 20,000 animals a year. And thanks to the people, it's happened to locate families for them. That's been reduced in some of our policies on fees and so forth. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
On this, that people owe us so, what is it, $700,000 or so? Mr. Moore, does that come under the liability to do garnishment like we can for other fees owed to the county?
Well, it does. We're able to use any type of collection method for those fees. I think debt set-off is going to be one of the best ways for us to try to collect them because as Dr. Blankenship pointed out, the reason we have this problem is uneducated populace don't necessarily take good care of their pets or make good decisions about selecting pets, and they end up in our control. And those folks, you know, often tend to be judgment-proof. So we can spend money to try to sue them to collect, but we're just, it's not free for us to file anymore to do, to take people to court, and we end up with someone we can't collect from. So we try to investigate whether or not it's possible for us to collect some of those debts, but the answer typically is we won't be able to get anything in return.
Well, can we do it through the same program we do for people that owe EMS expenses?
We can do debt set-off.
That's what I'm saying.
And that's what, you know, will be probably our best tool if we can, you know, discover that there's.
Can you explain debt set-off?
Yes, sir. Debt set-off's a program that the State Institute did some years ago to allow us to file a claim against tax returns. So if somebody filed their tax return and they're going to get a refund from the state, we can make a claim against that tax return and get paid. And we use it to great effect for tax collections and for JIMs collections as well. Over the past years, we've been one of the highest counties in the debt set-off program. So, you know, we certainly need to try to apply that to the problem that this shelter has. But we've been trying for a long, tried time to figure out creative ways to collect those debts on their license fees and citations and so forth. It's a tough nut to crack.
Do you need direction to do debt set-off? Is that?
No, sir. We do that. We have that direction from the board, and previously we do it in most respects. And I don't know to the extent to which we've been trying to do that with animal control, but I will ask some questions about that and see.
We do do it at animal control. We do not recover a lot. I did last month, and we recovered $4,800, and those exact same people owed us over $5,000 still. So unfortunately, it works to get us some of the money back. It doesn't have quite the teeth. Maybe that we might need to get more of it.
Well, it's owed, so, you know, any way we can try to collect it. You know, and someone mentioned earlier about the paradigm shift in the county on this, and I know we're coming a long way on animal control. And I would hope that we get to the point, we don't have to euthanize animals. Yeah, maybe for some medical reason, but that's where I'd like to be. I know other parts of the country, they're, they have, they don't have, seem to have this problem, especially some of the New England states.
Yeah. They have stricter laws. They have spay-neuter laws, whereas North Carolina does not have a spay-neuter law. So I think that does benefit them, and that does decrease the overwanted pet population.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Blankenship. I'll echo what these gentlemen said. I know it's not an easy job and maybe one of the more difficult positions we have, but I appreciate you taking it head-on and trying to attack the problems we have. I do have a couple of things that I hope you can address for me. When you were talking about the hours of operations, I guess Monday through Wednesdays, 11 to 5?
11 to 6.
Okay. Then Thursday and Friday's 11 to 5? Is there a reason that's not uniform?
I actually don't know. That was the hours of service that I inherited that had been in place. So I didn't, I don't know why those hours. I do know they opened at 11:00 in order to allow the kennel staff to get the kennels cleaned so that once we were open, they could help the citizens because they're pulled back and forth. If they're in the middle of cleaning, they'll be called up to take an animal in.
Okay. Yeah, I understand. 11:00 is okay, but I.
I'm not sure.
Can we not have uniform hours? Can we open up two hours, Thursday and Friday? For that, can we go till 6:00 Thursday and Friday? Is that a problem?
We should be able to now. We do have full, we have full staff in the office now.
Okay.
Whereas in the past, we have not. So we may be able to, and I think that's definitely something, that getting the hours a little bit more uniform would probably be beneficial.
Yeah. Because when I heard that, that, yeah, it didn't make sense to me. So I appreciate you clarifying that. You've, so secret, you've heard a lot of the complaints. You've heard what people have said. This board has heard what people have said. Is there anything, knowing resources are what they are, your limitations are what they are, is there anything that we could be doing better? And is there anything that you need from this board to do a better job with animal control? Yeah, I know that's very, very ambiguous, but is, are there any of the?
Does that sound like a loaded question?
Are there any of these complaints that really have merit? And is there anything that, even right now, that's even within your control, that there was some things that were said that had some merit? For example, if it is true that somebody came, the example of, you know, they were there for 20, 30 minutes, and there's a hard, fast time of a 4:00 cutoff, and it was 10 after, that doesn't reconcile with me. So that would be one example. And so you've heard more. Are there any other examples that you think have merit that we could work on?
Well, in terms of us asking someone to leave at 10:00 after we didn't, she actually, that transporter was there until 4:40. So she had showed up at 3:50 and she left at 4:40. She chose not to take the dog because the dog was aggressive, unfortunately, in that unfortunate situation. But in general, I think that more staffing for kennel is important. I think that the amount of work that they have to do is phenomenal. And in general, on a day, we have two kennel staff with one supervisor, and they have to clean all of the cages, and they also have to go in and help the citizens when they have drop-offs or reclaims or anything like that, interactions with pets. So staffing in the kennel for sure is something that it needs to be increased, just to be able to better serve the community and better serve the animals. A new facility, and I know that is in the works, would definitely be beneficial because that is going to, I have heard comments from people in the community of, I don't want to go to the shelter, it's too dark. So I think that that's definitely, though that may appear to be aesthetic, it is important because that will draw the community in and realize that we are not a big, bad facility. We're here, we really want to help the animals. But also, it's going to help the animals themselves so that they're healthier, allow the kennel staff to clean more efficiently and more effectively, also decrease disease by getting actually proper ventilation, things such as that, better sealed floors, things that are going to prevent the accumulation of debris and things. So, and I know that that is in the works. Currently, what, I mean, we really staffing is, and the kennel staff seems to be the ones that have the hardest, and the field operation specialists are the hardest in terms of the demands that are placed on them.
You were talking about the holds, and the 72 hours will come and go, and there'll be several days. Have you reached out to any other counties, any other directors to see if they had the same problem? And if they do, how do they address it? I mean, surely, we can't be the only county.
No, we're not.
That people put holds on animals and don't show up for eight days, if at all.
Right. And I have spoken to the surrounding counties, and only one that I know of, and I believe it's Cleveland County, they actually will allow people to put holds on them. The other ones do not have the hold policy. York County, which is right over the border, they only have hold policies for emergencies. And so it's 5:00 and your car breaks down, we'll hold it till tomorrow, first thing in the morning. But it's an emergency and it's on a case-to-case basis for the most part. But the other, the other areas do not have hold policies. So it's first come, first served. Here are the animals, and if you'd like to come get them, here they are.
Okay. And so that's what you want to go more towards?
That's more what we want to go towards, just because of the fact that we will keep them. We want to be able to keep them longer than the average 72 hours. 72 hours, which is the state mandate for strays, is actually a pretty short period. So if we can keep them longer, if we have the space available, the animals are healthy and that the animals are not overly stressed, we'd like to keep them, give them the benefit of the doubt, and be able to get them to place more animals, get more animals out of their new good homes.
Okay. Well, again, thank you very much. My final question is for Mr. Mathers. Commissioner Fraley and I, at the NACO conference last year, I think found a couple of options of people that, they have like an automated system for the pet animal control, and I think we submitted that to you, and I think you said you guys were looking at some of some of those options. One of them may have been pet data. I, I can't remember off the cuff, but, uh, have you looked into that? Uh, I think they help us collecting the fees. It's more of an automated system and I think they boast a pretty good collection rate of, of those. Uh, have we looked at that more in depth?
Uh, yeah, we have been looking at that and I believe, uh, we're considering strongly implementing it. I think the big advantage is, is not so much in terms of revenue. Indeed, it'd probably be revenue neutral, but it would be, uh, an efficiency that we could gain and perhaps free some time up for people to do things other than, uh, than take fees.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we need a more automated system and, you know, you don't want to pay these people that could be doing other things, trying to collect those fees. So I would like to just kind of expedite that and see if we can come up with something.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll try to keep it brief. First, I want to thank you. I, I want you to know that this board fully, one hundred percent supports you.
Thank you.
We want you to know that. And we support the job that you are doing. At our last meeting, I think every single commissioner, uh, took time during the meeting to let you know that. Uh, when I got elected in office, I thought being elected was bad. You know, I get cussed and, you know, it's, it's horrible. But I thought it was bad. Once I realized what you have to deal with, it's at a whole different level. Uh, and you're never going to win. You're never going to win because somebody is always going to point something out. Um, I think what I, I want the people that came up and spoke tonight to know is that just over a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, we were using a gas chamber, we were not even looking toward building a facility, we, we didn't have a vet, an actual licensed doctor that ran our facilities. This is how far we've come. We, we now have a veterinarian that runs our facility. We no longer have the gas chamber. It's gone. I, I don't know if anybody knows that, but quietly, gone. Doesn't exist. Uh, we, we've just put a bid in on a facility, if I'm correct, and I think they accepted, uh, to build an animal control facility. Uh, and I don't even like the word control. I agree. It's, that's, that's not, you know, where we're at. But we have made great strides in this area. When I hear, let, let me say this. I, I heard you mention this. You, you said, "We want to do what's in the best interest of, for the animals, best interest for the taxpayer and the best interest for the rescue folks." I don't take, don't take this the wrong way. What I'm interested in is the animals and the taxpayers in Gaston County. And, um, when we talk about longer times, when we talk about more staff and things of this nature, that sounds good when we're sitting up here talking. But we're talking real dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars, uh, to do this. I, I, I think we need to have a conversation in this community if that's what we want to do and that's where we want to go. Um, I think it's easy to get groups of folks on either side to tell you what they want. I don't know if we really have had a good conversation on where do we want our animal facilities, what level we want them to be at, what we're willing to pay in Gaston County. Uh, to give you an example, a lot of people don't know that we don't have to enforce lease laws in municipalities. We do that at no charge. In Cleveland County, they charge municipalities to do that. We don't do that here. Um, and, and there's a, there's a, a lot of conversation we can have in this area. But what I want the public to know is, no, we're not perfect. It, it's not right a hundred percent of the time, but we have excellent leadership. We are definitely going in the right direction. Uh, and, and I think you can trust Dr. Blankenship and the direction we're going, that we're not going to get it right every time, but this is something that is just markedly different than a year and a half ago. And the comments that we get, um, are some of the rudest, meanest, vilest comments I've ever seen in my life. Um, and I think they're unwarranted. And that's why I really wanted you to know that you have a tough job, but it's a needed job. You can do the job. You have the support of this board. And we think, just like we've progressed over a year and a half, a year from now, we're going to see more improvement and better. And we welcome the whole conversation from everyone. We have an animal task advisory board. If you're a citizen in this county, go to the meetings. Uh, they're open to the public. You can be a part of that. Uh, and you, and actually, a lot of the, the recommendations that we have, uh, had and where we're going is because of that. So this is an issue this board has taken seriously, uh, but, but it's, it's bigger than just adding that. All these things are tax dollars. And when you're looking at what Gaston College needs, you're, you're looking at what public school needs, you're looking at DHHS needs, you have to prioritize. And, and that's a conversation we need to have that I don't really think we've had in, uh, at our animal control facility. So, I'm sorry, but-
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support.
Other matters. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to address the Hunter Husse constituency as well. They, uh, like you had stated earlier about going to, uh, the school board, I think that's where your next move. But, uh, I know this board had, you know, approved a bunch of school bonds. I think they did about over four and a half million out there. Um, I say it was in the last five to six years, and I know some of that was for the football field. I'm not, we just get to appropriate the money and, uh, but I will say this. Um, I've been a big advocate for something that Mr. Meeks has done before. I don't know if he's still here, you know, at school together, but, uh, and those basketball facilities. Um, the football facility, the track, there's a lot of different clubs around here. There's baseball going on every weekend at some of these facilities. And I just heard today, as a matter of fact, that Hunter Husse, uh, was told that they couldn't use their baseball facility for weekend baseball, which basically is revenue for your school. Um, so there's another talking point. I am a big advocate for any sports activity that wants to go on in this county and how we can get it to be number one. But we, we need to utilize our schools. We can utilize the gyms, the tracks, the football fields. Soccer is really big, uh, in this area. Um, those are all benefactors. But I did hear that today, that a gentleman wanted to use that field and was turned down. So that just gives you a little bit of example of where, uh, some of the bureaucracy is on that, but, uh, best of luck to you.
Can you tell us where, who turned down?
Um, I'll, I'll talk to you afterwards.
Commissioner Price?
Proceed.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, two things. I'll, I'll piggyback on what Commissioner Brown said about the Hunter Husse, um, issue. Uh, we have, Mr. Mathers, I guess stepped out. Last year, we partnered with the city of Gastonia to do some of those same things you guys are looking at, at Ashbrook High School. We repaved the tennis court and a couple of other things. And what we did is we partnered with the city and made that, uh, when it wasn't being used by the school, the public would have use of that tennis court. And I think to kind of, uh, piggyback off what Commissioner Brown said, anytime we can have multiple use facilities, I think that's something we want to utilize. And I've asked the county manager if he would reach out to the city of Gastonia to see if they would be interested in doing another similar project like we did at Ashbrook and partner with us and share some of the costs and make that, uh, open to the public when the school is not using it to kind of use their resources as well. So, uh, I do want you to know, uh, we, we've not ignored the requests that have come up. Uh, we got all the emails. I think Chairman Philbeck and I were personally named in your petition. So, uh, we, uh, we did get that and-
I know you didn't have a petition.
And, so we, we heard what you're saying. Uh, at the end of the day, like the chairman said a minute ago, resources are what they are. Money is what it is. But if we can figure out a way to partner, if we can figure out a way to, uh, parlay that money and utilize other funds, uh, we, we want to do that. So anyway, appreciate you guys coming. Last thing, uh, Saturday, the Karamot Community Challenge at Stewart Kramer High School, seven o'clock. I hope you will, uh, be there. It'll be a lot of fun. Uh, the five K's at eight, but there'll be things for kids and, and all kinds of stuff going on. So, uh, hope to see some of you out there. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
Um, I, I would like to address one issue. Don't really want to bring it up, but the Gazette brought it up and it needs to be addressed. Um, it has been reported in the paper that, um, I'm adopting three children, kids from Ukraine. It's been reported in the paper that I'm taking money from Gaston County, uh, through their adoption program. So, uh, Mr. Mathers, have I ever taken one penny from Gaston County for my adoption?
You have not.
And if anybody wants to know, pick up the phone and call. Everything you read in the paper is not true. Uh, so that, and if I did, it would be public record. So, but I did want to clear that up, um, and, and make sure the public knows that. Second of all, uh, since that issue came up, uh, I do think, uh, there are some things within the adoption policy I think we do need to look at. Uh, currently, we spend close to a million dollars a year, uh, through our foster, uh, program through, uh, DHHS. A million dollars a year on a hundred and ninety, I think it's a hundred and ninety-eight kids. There's another seventy-two children, um, that are placed with families. So your tax dollars are being spent, whether you like it or not, a million dollars on the current children in Gaston County to foster those kids through the fostering system. That's only thirty-five percent of the cost. The other sixty-five percent of that cost is picked up from the state and federal government. Um, if we could take one child out of that system by encouraging folks to adopt, it will do two things. Well, it will do a lot of things. But it could literally save the taxpayer millions, at least hundreds of thousands of dollars per child. If you take a child that was put into the system at an early age and they go all the way through the system, and then if they stay in the system, all the other issues that you have to deal with, uh, for children that are in that type of system. Uh, so if we could create a model to encourage folks to adopt and incentivize that, it would, whatever incentive we give would be far less than the millions you're going to spend on the front end. So the question, I think, the public has to, to really think about, are you going to pay it on the front end? Or are you going to pay it on the back end? But either way, you're going to pay it and there's a better cost if we encourage your community to adopt. It can absolutely change these children's lives. And we, as a board, uh, we're going to support those efforts. And I do think, uh, there's some things that we do need to change about it. Uh, I would actually, and I, I think there's been some conversation, to actually open it up to any citizen, uh, in, as long as you're a resident of Gaston County. But we need to vet those things, form a committee, maybe get some experts come in, uh, and look at that. Uh, so if it would be okay, I wanted to see if the board would allow me to get a committee together, research those issues, come to a work session, put it on the agenda, do a presentation, and then if it's something that we can show, it will save taxpayer dollars and change a child's life, bring it to a board meeting and vote on it, if, if y'all would allow me to do that.
Sounds good.
Go for it.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Commissioner Carpenter?
Okay. I'm glad you looked to the left. Uh, I was, I was going to mention something similar to that. When, when these folks were talking about animals being, you know, thrown away, uh, I was thinking about the number of children that's been thrown away in this county. And it relates to exactly what you were talking about. We have, I believe, two hundred and some in foster care right now, plus or minus.
Two seventy.
Uh, two seventy. But they're basically people that's not taking care of their family and they're basically throwing them away like people throwing animals away. And, and that's got to change. And I support what you, what you're talking about. The other thing is, uh, Mr. Brown responding about Hunter Husse, I'm real disappointed. I didn't know that things at Hunter Husse had gotten in disrepair. Because it's only been a few years ago that I know, uh, Paul Grenier and Jade Alpas took the lead, uh, actually when some of my kids was over there. But, uh, those facilities were redone. Uh, the fields were irrigated, the fields were graded properly and, uh, and baseball, the football, uh, they built a girl soccer ball field, uh, and a few other things up there, practice field. And I didn't know it had gotten, gotten into such disrepair. And so, uh, that's a school board issue, but, uh, you can tell them that I'm disappointed it didn't because I donated through my company, uh, most of the labor, except for labor and materials, uh, pretty much at cost to redo those fields, along with Mr. Dalpas giving money and Mr. Grenier, Grenier and, and others. Uh, there was some private money, citizen money went into that field. So, uh, I, I'm real disappointed that it's, I didn't know it's gotten in that shape. So we'll see if we can't do something about that.
I forgot one thing. Uh, Ms. Tammy Cantrell is here. Uh, she came a couple weeks ago during our work session and gave a presentation on the Ellie, Ella, Ella Mae Wiggins Foundation. And she had asked if this board would do a, not provide any tax dollars, but just provide a resolution of support, uh, for their efforts. And I just need to know, uh, if there's direction to do that. Um, is there agreement to do that?
Well, you know, I, I commend her for her, uh, strength and courage in doing what she did, uh, although it kind of goes against some of my principles as far as labor unions. But it is a historic event. And if you want to put a historic monument somewhere, recognize and that is a part of our history. I know, uh, Chief Adahole, Adahole, the chief of police was killed during that, uh, time. Uh, I don't know who done it, but, uh, it might have been Sonny's own. But it was a very turbulent time at the Lowry Mill. And so I, I know it's a very significant part of our history and I don't mind recognizing it as such. Not so much supporting what she was doing, but I think it was very historic.
Unless I hear otherwise, Commissioner Williams?
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, now, was that you, uh, that emailed today, Ms. Cantrell? Okay, I, I know that's from the official email. Okay. Uh, you know, I, I know that I've had, uh, a difficult time actually trying to find information about, uh, Ms. Wiggins. And I know that, um, I think some of the things that I have found, you know, are, are a little, give me a little bit of pause and, and actually offering an endorsement. I do agree with Commissioner Carpenter. It, it's history regardless of, of which way you want to look at it. But, uh, at the same time, as far as something that this board would endorse and support. And I think some of the things you referred to about, uh, what we do with nonprofits, we actually cut that out about a year or two ago. And everything is done through our family advisory boards. I know we don't support nonprofits through our board. Um, and I know Commissioner Keighore was reaching out to some of the, uh, police agencies to see their opinion and any sensitivities that may be there. But, but that aside, uh, just to be frank with you, I don't know that I've found enough that overcomes the reservation that I had. At, at the end of the day, yes, the board's called, but I do want that noted. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, Tammy, I want to say thank you. You know, you're doing a great job of raising awareness. I, I'm sort of in the same ballpark as, uh, Commissioner Williams and Carpenter about some of the aspects that go along with the labor union. Uh, the communist will keep, I mean, it just, a lot of things. Um, I don't feel you have to have our blessing. I mean, just to be honest, I don't think, but I think it's, it's very, uh, stand up that you're doing what you're doing because it's something you believe in. And, uh, it's just from my part of it, what I've read, um, I really, I, I put a lot of research into it today and found some, you know, that maybe only she lived here two years. I don't know if that's true from where it says she moved to Gaston County. So, um, I guess my biggest part of it is trying to say, "I'm ready for you to move wherever you want to do as far as your personal," because that's, that's how you guys work. And, and you guys are doing a great job. I just don't see where you need our blessing to, to do it. I mean, just, just being honest. I know that it helps to, uh, solidify it a little bit, but it's, some of the issues there, I really just don't, uh, like to see.
Thank you. Um, maybe what we can do, Earl, is, uh, and if it's okay with the board, talk to Commissioner Keighore, Commissioner Fraley, um, because it's not something we have to vote on, uh, to send a letter. Uh, am I correct, Chuck? That we have to vote to send a letter? Okay. Uh, just see where a majority is. Uh, I, I have no issue, uh, supporting history, uh, things I like or don't like. Uh, the Lowry Mill strike was huge. Uh, it impacted this area. Uh, so, you know, my support is not necessarily supporting someone's view, uh, or what they stood for as much as, uh, history. as, uh, history, and the good, bad, and ugly, in my opinion, uh, needs to be told. Uh, so, if you'll just check with them, uh, I think, i- if, if you see there's a majority, I'll be more than glad to send a letter. I think Commissioner Carpenter and I would definitely be that way. Commissioner Price, where are you at on the issue?
I'm with, I'm the same way with Commissioner Williams and Brown, I'm about the same ballpark.
Okay, so, ask, uh, Commissioner Fraley and Keeger if they're fine, we can, and if not, don't have, uh, the support to do it, so, okay? Thank you, gentlemen. This concludes our work session for tonight, or, oh, excuse me, and could you let her know something pretty quick and not, we don't want it, you know, maybe at least by Monday? Okay. This concludes our work session for tonight. Our next regular meeting is May the 26th at 6:00 PM at the Harley B. Gaston Junior Public Forum Courthouse. I'd like to thank you for watching. If you have questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna Buff, at 704-866-3196, and share them. Good night. Whoop.